Recording. And live.
Great. Okay, thank you, Caitlin and ladies and gentlemen and attendees. Welcome to the Newbury Report zoning board of appeals for the hearing of January 11th, 2022. Happy New Year to everyone. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm the chairman of the Newbury Report zoning board and I'll be helping run this evening's meeting. And for those of you that are just beginning to log on, we're, we usually take a moment just to allow folks to take their time and sort of gather in as an attendee. What we like to do before we jump into the, you know, the meat of this evening's meeting and the public hearings is I like to take a moment and just introduce the board. Of course, I'll also take role. We'll establish that we have a quorum, which means we have the legal basis to proceed with our business this evening, which appears to be five public hearings. And I'll also establish for the record who our five voting members are. And just a quick lay of the land and we'll, we'll get started without, without too much ado. So I'll begin by calling the role and if you members of the ZBA, just please respond either here or I, or I'm sorry, here or present, Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Delisle.
Here.
Mr. Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes, here.
And Rob Champetti, I'm here. That is six members present that establishes a quorum. We will, for purposes of this evening, we will have, there are five voting members that are established on the application for 2224 Olive Street LLC. The five voting members with the recusal of Mr. Delisle are myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Bennet for the application of 156 State Street. Also with the recusal of Mr. Delisle, our five voting members for that application this evening will be myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Bennet. And for the remainder of the three applications on our agenda this evening, the five voting members will be myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton, and Mr. Shannon. So without further ado, I'll just take a moment, introduce the board and give everyone a quick lay of the land. For those of you who may be new to a Zoom version of a public hearing, specifically our public hearings for the Newbury Report ZBA, I'll just walk everyone through the, the, the mechanics and flow of how this evening will, will, will move forward so that everyone is, is aware of what to expect and what to plan for. So beginning, we have Mr. Mr. Mark Moore, our vice chair in attendance. Mr. Stephen Delisle is a, our secretary. Mr. Ken Swanton, our member, Mr. Walter Bud Shannon, member, and Mr. Gregory Bennet, associate member. And again, my name is Rob Champetti, chairman. So for those, before we jump into public hearings, beginning first with 20, the continuation of 2224 Olive Street. Just for those that are just logging on now, a quick lay of the land. When we conduct our business on the ZBA, we run the, the hearing by a modified version of Robert's Rules of Order. To that end, I started every application by reading the public notice. I don't read the full notice. You may recognize the descriptors, however, by the address, the applicant by name, as well as a brief description from the public notice as to what the applicant is seeking in terms of relief from this board, whether it's a special permit, special permit for non-conformities or a variance or what have you. There'll be a descriptor so that you can recognize what specifically is being asked of our board and what applications will be hearing. After I read that public notice, I then turn the floor over to the applicant to present the application. The applicant or the applicant's representative or representatives or their attorney or attorneys, architects and such will present to the board the, the details and renderings and any other information that is relevant for the application. We usually like to, and given the length of our meetings as of late and our, the length of our meetings going forward, it's likely that we're going to need to place some limits on presentation time. And we also like, we need to place certain time limits and courtesies on public, the public comment section. And I'll talk about that in a moment. But we ask that everyone be as efficient as possible in the presentation so that everyone that's on the docket for the entire evening has an opportunity to have their application heard. So once we hear from the applicant, we will then close that portion of the public hearing. I then go to the public comments section. And at that moment, you'll see a slide that Mr. Port, our planning director, will put up. It really just lays out the, the, the details for public comment. We ask that everyone just please give your name and address to, for the record. And we ask that you kindly just let us know what you think. Let us know what information you'd like to offer. You don't need to come down in a pro or con column. Don't feel as though you have to be for or against, just simply give us your name and address and let us know your thoughts. We then ask that you kindly govern yourselves accordingly with respect to a two-minute time limit. That's so that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. I will use discretion to try to give folks additional time if absolutely needed, but we'll give you a warning and fair warning if we feel like it's running long, just so that everyone has a moment to be heard. Once I've gone through hearing the public comment, and by the way, if you're not familiar with this via Zoom, you'll see a raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We'll ask that you kindly just click that button so that we can see your name and identify you. I'll then ask Mr. Port to promote you as an attendee onto the panel so that we can hear from you. I'll let you know by name or by telephone number, if you're calling in, that you're being recognized and to, and that you have the floor. And then you could just give us your name and address. When you complete that, please just lower your hand so this way we know who we've done and who has yet to be heard. So once, once we complete the questions from the board, we'll then close that section of the public hearing. And I'll go to, I'm sorry, once we complete public comment, I'll close that section of the public hearing and we'll go to questions from the board. Questions from the board are when the board essentially just asks questions of the applicant, the applicant's representatives. Keep in mind that as a, during the public comment section, you may pose a question. Please know that we mean you no discourtesy if you don't hear us respond to answer your question directly. Know that we're listening to it. We're taking notes and members of the ZBA may well adapt part or parts of your question and then recirculate those in the form of a question from a board member to whomever. So know well that your question's being listened to, though that the format doesn't allow us to address your question directly. Please know that that doesn't mean we're disregarding it in any way. Once the members of the board have gone, we've gone through and everyone's asking the questions they had, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. We go to the last portion, which is the deliberation. Deliberations are essentially when all members, attendees, any members of the public, as well as the applicant and such, listen to the members of the ZBA discuss and deliberate the legal criteria and the details out loud. It's essentially, everyone gets to listen to us think out loud. And in doing so, we try to tether and tailor our comments around the legal criteria that must be met, whether it's a variance, a special permit, a special permit for non-conformities or what have you. You'll hear members of the board and we'll go through each member to give their thoughts. And there may be a discussion and repartee back and forth. Once we have finished that portion, we close that portion of the public hearing, at which point the, the modified Roberts Rules of Order come into play. I will then ask a member of the ZBA to offer a motion to approve. Please know that in doing so, that does not mean that that member plans to support or approve that application, but rather it's the mechanics by which that question is advanced for a vote. It's done in the format of an affirmative motion to approve. That motion must then be seconded by another member, at which point I call the role. In order for an application to be successful, four members must vote in the affirmative. If they vote in the affirmative, all four, if four members vote in the affirmative, the eyes would have it and the motion carries and that application's approved. So essentially that is the, the hopefully shortened and bridged version of how we do business here. It's, it's in sort of fair notice to make sure everyone understands the flow and the tempo and the mechanics of how we do our business for ZBA. So with that having been said, I also note that we have in attendance, Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner. We also have Ms. Jennifer Blancher, our zoning codes enforcement officer. And finally, Ms. Gretchen Joy, our keeper of the minutes. It's important to just give your name out loud and address so that Ms. Joy can record notes and your name and such. So without further ado, we're going to open our public hearings and get right into the first application, which is a continuation of the application of 2224 Olive Street LLC care of Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, and Acosta. This is an application continued from December 14th. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals to remove an addition on the rear structure and construct a new addition. Attorney Mead, you, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, Acosta, 30 Green Street, Newbury Port, on behalf of the applicant, 2224 Olive Street LLC, whose manager is John Sarkis, who's with me this evening, along with Ernie DiMaio, who is the architect on the project. This board has heard a couple of meetings on this in great detail. I intend to be a little briefer this evening, but do want to highlight a couple of points that I think that we missed presenting to the board in the prior meetings. So the board at the last meeting had not arrived at decision and we requested continuance. In the meantime, my client has reviewed the proposal again. We have made a slight adjustment. If you could go to the first slide, please, Caitlin. Before getting into that, I would say, because I read all of the comments that have been submitted to the planning office as of four or something this afternoon. And, you know, I'm almost embarrassed to have to say this, but I think it's really important. And it really, it doesn't matter. And I think the board knows that it doesn't matter. But Mr. Sarkis is a resident of the city of Newbury Port. Between Newbury Port and West Newbury, he's lived here for over 30 years. When he lived in West Newbury, he participated in various land use boards in that town and is active, you know, in Newbury Port, doing this work and other work that he does on land development. So Mr. Sarkis is a resident of Newbury Port, not that that matters. I again show you the slight, the site plan to remind the board that the application before it, but for the setback off of Olive Street and which remains unchanged and but for the lot area, the proposed structure meets all the dimensional requirements of the ordinance, unlike most all of the other structures in the neighborhood. In, in the response to comments from the neighbors relative to parking on Russia Street, as you know, we provided or proposed two sections of parking on Russia Street, two, two car parking areas. My client is proposing, if you could go to the next slide, to remove one of those parking areas. And that is the one off to the right that you see bubbled in the red. So the proposal would be if the board were inclined to approve this application this evening, to remove as a condition prior to any issuance of any building permit, to show a plan that removes that parking area and to only have on Russia Street the curb cut that allows for the two parking spaces in the middle of the building, if you will. Therefore, the applicant would be required, of course, to provide two more parking spaces. And so there would be proposed to be an extension for two tandem spaces on Olive Street. As you know, there is a space right now for one, and we would extend that to approximately 10 by 49 to allow for two tandem parking spaces on Olive Street, thereby eliminating that second curb cut and space for two spaces on Russia Street. This still is an improvement over existing conditions and still allows for conformance with the parking requirements for the existing and proposed two-family use. If you could go to the next slide, please. I'd also like to point out to the board that the proposal, as, as I've said, meets all of the zoning requirements and design requirements relative to additions of historic structures. If you go to the next slide, please. The eve line of the, in the height of the proposed addition is about two feet 11 inches lower than the existing building's eve line. The three-dimensional relief, as you can see along this view of the proposed addition facade provides for better visual impact on the community rather than one long boring plane. From an objective size, shape, massing and height of the proposed addition as compared to nearby structures within eyesight, not only is the proposed addition smaller, the existing structure is smaller in height than those of the surrounding neighborhood. The setback in open lawn area, if you could go to the next slide, please, along Russia Street is more generous than most all of the neighborhood. When here the standard is whether or not it's substantially more detrimental than the existing structure on the neighborhood. The openness and lines of sight created by the removal of the existing fence and outbuildings when removed and additional, as we've noted, 25 feet of front yard will be exposed along Russia Street for its entire length. The distance proposed of the proposed renovations from all of the lot lines is compared to those surrounding structures are in excess of what exists in surrounding, in the surrounding neighborhood. At no point did the proposed improvements within 25 feet of the lot line. This again is better than the conditions of most all of the neighborhood and certainly not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. If you go to the next slide, please. As this board knows, the criteria for a special permit, that there won't be any new addition of a new non-conformity, of course, we meet that requirement. And that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use, considering, among other relevant factors, size, scale, massing, volume, and location of the proposed structure and extension or alteration as compared to the existing structure and lot and other structures and lots in the neighborhood. If you could go to the next slide, please. I'm pulling up this, if you could blow it up just a little bit, please, Caitlin. I'm pulling this up again. This has been revised as, as close as Ernie could get it on a scale using the site plan and survey, which is scaled to scale this plan to be more accurate than the last one. And it's, it's pretty darn close as best as can be compared to on the mind maps. Objectively, when the members review this proposal as compared to the neighborhood and taking into consideration the size of the lot and compliance with the ordinance, the objective criteria can be reviewed to determine that the proposed renovations and additions are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Indeed, the proposal eliminates all of the existing non-conformities, including the parking and setback from Russia Street and improves the setbacks from the neighbors on 20 Olive Street. While public comment and neighborhood input are certainly important, as this board knows, it's subjective and not controlling on the board. Indeed, property owners are held to standards and an ordinance, not to personal opinions of adjacent or nearby property owners. There's a case that's informative out of the land court called Graff versus Aiken from 2018. In the Graff case, a defendant sought a special permit to raise a one-story garage and replace it with a two-story structure. An immediate abutter objected. The zoning board found no substantial detriment to the neighborhood and the abutter appealed. The land court judge determined that the zoning board correctly found that there was no substantial detriment, particularly where the board noted that the non-conformities were not unique to the defendant's property and the objecting property owner's garage was within the side yard setback itself. As to the application before you, the immediate neighbor complains that the addition would essentially construct a wall too close to and too far along the lot line. However, the neighbor's structure is located only several feet, if that, along the same lot line and is taller than the existing home at 22 to 24 Olive Street and certainly taller than the proposed addition. The proposal improves the current setback on the current additions on the proposed project and exceeds the setback allowed under the zoning ordinance by four and a half feet. Further, as you can see from this neighborhood comparison, the proposed project includes more open space, more separation from lot lines and from the street, and in particular on the corner and many other lots in the neighborhood, certainly is, is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure on the neighborhood. Finally, the board and the neighbors discuss massing. The missing component here, of course, is consideration of lot size. This lot, as can be seen, is one of the largest lots in the neighborhood. By continuing to meet the dimensional requirements but for a lot area and setback off of Olive Street, there is, there is an objective measure with which to review the proposal. Here, the addition is smaller than the existing structure and a setback from all lot lines and similar in width than the footprint width of the existing structure. Here, the non-conforming lot line, as one member pointed out previously, is 70% of what is required for a two-family use. However, only the lot opposite on Russia Street is more conforming at 74% of the required single-family home lot of 10,000 square feet. And at number 16, Olive Street, which is at 75%, the remaining surrounding properties are approximately as follows. Immediately adjacent at 20 Olive Street, the lot is 39% of that which is required. And at 18, excuse me, at 18, it's 39% of that which is required. And at 20, it's 33% of that which is required. On down Olive Street, as you go toward Merrimack, that's the 75% at 16. Across the street from 16, at 19 Olive Street, the lot's 41% of what is required. And at 21 Olive Street, it's 45%. And at 23, it's 24%. And then on the big lot at where the sixth unit is, that's only 44% of what's required for a six-family structure, which would be 28,000 square feet. At 37 Olive Street, it's only 31% of what's required. And then across the street on the corner of Congress and Olive, it's only 35% of what's required. Certainly, this lot is not, the continuing non-conformity is not substantially more detrimental when you add the new structure on the lot, which meets all of the lot area dimension, excuse me, the lot dimension requirements when it concerns coverage and open space. We ask the board consider the meaning of substantially, which is to a great or significant extent. Here, when you look at the proposal and the lot upon which it is located as compared to the existing structure and those in the neighborhood, from the objective standards of the dimensional requirements and the criteria of the ordinance, we believe the board can find the proposed modification is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure or use to the neighborhood. And we will request the board's consideration of our request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to a continuation of public comment. And with that, Andy, if you could put up the public comments slide, which I now see up, and we'll begin recognizing anyone who wishes to speak in connection with this application. Just kindly raise your hand and we will recognize you. I see Attorney Shaheen. Attorney Shaheen, you can go ahead and unmute your mic and you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, honorable members. My name is Bill Sheehan. I practice law at 8 Essex Center Drive in PBD, Massachusetts, and represent Carol Zamprona this evening. When we were last before this board on December 14th, four of the members have had an op, had an opportunity to comment on the application. Each one commented that the proposed structure was far too large, too massive, was really a second house on a, on the lot. It was substantially more detrimental as to open space, size, scale, massing, and so on. And so when the applicant asked for a continuance, one might have expected that the applicant would come back before this board and address the board's concerns and the neighbors' concerns as to size, scale, and massing. And the short answer to that is that the applicant has done none of that. That is, all of the failings that were discussed on December 14th and prior there to remain the failings. And so I don't believe that on behalf of Ms. Zamprona, that I have to say too much more than what I said on December 14th. What we are dealing with here is a lot that is far too small for a two-family house, which again is really two houses in one here. We are dealing with a lot that is too small by nearly a third. The house is too close to Olive Street and it's too close to my client's property with respect to zoning. We're going to ask you, as we asked you on December 14th, to please deny this application. Very simply, the, the applicant is proposing something on a lot that's too small for two houses. The two houses do not fit in the neighborhood. It will choke off light, it will chuck off air, will overcrowd an existing non-conforming lot, overcrowd the neighborhood. Very simply stated, it is too big. It will have my client looking instead of what she now views as a 24-foot high and 38-foot long wall, it will be a 24-foot high and 84-foot long wall. That is really not an addition. It is a second single-family house. We ask you to determine that the proposal constitutes substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and to deny the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Sheehan. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application? Just kindly raise your hand and we will recognize you. Let's see, we have a few hands up. I'll just go in order. Mary Beth Pelletier, Ms. Pelletier, if you could unmute your mic, you have the floor. Just again, if you could kindly give your name and address for our keeper of the minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Mary Beth Pelletier. I live at 11 Olive Street. And while I am new to the calls and meetings regarding this, I have looked at it pretty carefully and I would, and I really appreciate the opportunity to express my opinions and speak tonight. Much, much of what I am going to say is similar to what's been said before, but I feel really strongly about this. The proposed development is in a historically important area of the city. It is extreme in its size, design, and scope. The impact would be immediate and create a substantial change to the character, look, and feel of a neighborhood that's got significant heritage in the development of Newbury Port. It was settled in the 17 and 1800s and the structures in this neighborhood were built by people who supported and were sustained by our maritime origins. They were ship captains and marit, mariners, tradesmen like carpenters and masons, provisions, provisioners, and shopkeepers who lived and worked here because of the shipyards at the foot of Olive and all along Merrimack. The proposed addition would substantially alter a Greek revival home built in the 1830s, which sits at the corner of Olive and Russia Streets, directly across from Captain Pickett's home, built in 1796. The addition nearly doubles the footprint of the Greek revival home and, as we have seen and heard, adds a visual mass that's close to double of that of the existing home. The scale of this proposed addition is incompatible and out of sync with its surroundings. And as others have said, in essence, it puts two large two-story buildings on the lot. Secondly, not only would the impact of this addition be detrimental and immediate, the ongoing impact is equally significant. If allowed to go forward, this special permit for a non-compliant addition opens the door for future erosion of the uniqueness that has made Newbury Port a desirable and sought-after place to live. Stewardship of the unique history and character of Newbury Port is our mutual responsibility. I will put this, these notes, they're in a letter, and I will submit them to the zoning board and the planners. And I appreciate the opportunity to express my thoughts. I am grateful and thank you, zoning board and planners, for all you do on behalf of the city.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pelletier. Moving on, next, we'll recognize Ms. Amy Badger. Ms. Badger, if you could unmute your mic, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you. It's Amy Badger and I'm at 21 Olive Street. And I know that most of my thoughts and concerns and questions have been described in previous correspondence with the board as well as at the last meeting. So I'll just add a couple of things here today. In tonight's comparison to the other properties on Olive Street and the coverage and that sort of thing, this neighborhood was settled in the 17 and 1800s. So for, you know, the, the zoning laws as they stand now were conceived and, and crafted much more recently. So the fact that we've got homes, you know, 16 Olive Street is at whatever it is, 50% of the lot or however the numbers work on this street, it really only goes to underscore that this is, these are homes and neighborhoods that were, this was. um this was done years ago when we didn't have the forty-eight percent or the thirty-two percent, so it, it's really kind of hard to judge um where this house stands compared to these other, other little houses on the street. So I, I'm just um, I'm finding a, a hard time uh relating the two. But mostly, I just want to say that I feel like by coming back to the board with um very few changes, um I feel like they're relying on wearing us down in a, in a way that the historical committee um looked to be worn down. Um they reluctantly passed this in this, in the fall, and many of the committee members voiced strong concerns with this project um while they approved it. So um many of us have invested countless hours listening to the largely the same proposal. And there are several mem- people who can't be with us tonight because they have conflicting meetings and other obligations, but to say that, you know, they've been worn down or they've given up is, is just not the case. It's just that we all have other things to do with our lives. Um it, I just don't, I don't see um anything largely changed, and the only thing that changed was the parking and um it just underscores something I've said at each turn, which is uh tandem part, taking out the second parking lot over there, um I think exacerbates the parking because tandem parking um in my experience on both sides of town um is a really hard thing, and people will park on the street. So we're gonna have a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot or three-thousand-square-foot house that's gonna have one, two, probably three cars and a tandem parking situation just seems untenable. Um I thank you for your time and your consideration and um I will uh say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badger. Um I will uh recognize, it looks like Mr. Tom Adams has his hand up. Mr. Adams, uh if you want to unmute your mic, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Uh my name is Hayward, Hayward Adams. I am the owner of eighteen Olive Street. Um I am a friendly neighbor of all the people who have spoken previously and have completely supported the modest residential improvements of the mentioned addresses at sixteen Olive Street, nineteen Olive Street, and twenty-one Olive Street, who have also, have all made modest improvements. In the prior this meeting, previous meeting on December fourteenth, there was mention of modest improvements on this residence at twenty-two, twenty-four Olive Street. And that doesn't seem to have been reflected in the current proposal or the updates. During the uh time when they were having to present their cases to the board for their improvements at each of those three residences, I supported them um unconditionally because of the percentage of improvement that they were proposing relative to the home that they lived in, which was not by any means to be contested. So I was in full support of that residential improvement for each of those residents proposed. However, this proposed expansion of twenty-two, twenty-four Olive Street is not in kind with the neighborhood modest residential improvements that had previously been improved. So I, I invite the board to consider that the percentage of improvements that have occurred in the three examples that I've cited and I um others have spoken about uh that they consider that in their decision-making uh later this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. Uh recognizing uh Ms. Carol Zamprona. Uh Ms. Zamprona, if you want to kindly unmute your mic and uh if I could ask Ms. Pelletier, if you don't mind lowering your hand just i- in the event you, unless you still want it to be recognized again, it's just easy for us to sort of keep track. I appreciate that. Uh okay. Ms. Zamprona, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman and Members. I'll be brief tonight. I'm just, I'm shocked and disappointed that we're back reviewing the same proposal so many months later. Uh to Tom's point and to the attorney's point, when we met in December, the neighbors and the ZBA all suggested that a more reasonable or a more modest uh proposal would likely gain approval, not only from you but also from the neighbors. And I think that's very much our sentiment. We are looking for a more modest and appropriate proposal. Um I'm a little surprised that the new driveway requires an extension to fit tandem parking. There have been two fairly large cars parked in that existing driveway space for several days, and they were fairly large. So two cars did fit in the tandem, so I'm a little unclear why it needs to be expanded, but that's not the main. My main concern tonight is that is the nineteen-hundred-square-foot uh large second home that's being added to the property and quite frankly, I, I, I'm trying to sit in the shoes of the ZBA. You've got these difficult decisions to make representing all of Newburyport and thinking, geez, if this was in your backyard and the view that you were gonna have in the, and the home that was being changed forever next to you, how would you vote? And my conscience tells me I'm just not comfortable with this from any perspective. So I appreciate it. I promise to keep brief. I'll let others speak up, uh but thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zamprona. Um recognizing Elizabeth Hallett or Halet, my apologies for mispronouncing. Uh Ms. Halet, you uh have the floor.
Uh thank you. My name is Elizabeth Hallett. Uh my husband and I reside at twenty-three Olive. Um and I just would like to go on record once again um as completely agreeing with every one of my neighbors who has spoken this evening, uh Carol, Tom, Amy, and in addition, uh Attorney Shaheen. We are also very disappointed that this um um so-called addition is not um reflected any change in size whatsoever um compared to what we, you know, we, we sort of all gathered from the December meeting that even the board members were not, uh not really on board with the size of this so-called addition. It is not an addition, in my opinion. It is a separate dwelling, and uh it is more detrimental to the neighborhood because it, it is the addition, so-called addition significantly larger than a lot of the homes in the area regardless of percent of lot coverage. Um our home was built in the late sixteen hundreds. And of course, it, uh a lot of our land has been sold off over the years. Uh we have been here thirteen years and, you know, are still researching, but obviously we had a, one time, a very large lot. And now a, one of the smallest uh possible lots probably on this end of Olive Street. Um however, this had nothing to do with us. It was all done in the past. So our lots and our lot coverage have been um historically what they are for decades, if not centuries. Um and just because one has ownership of a large lot does not mean that one has to improve it and cover it with a dwelling. There is nothing wrong with open space. Let us not forget the problems with infill that we are having in the city of Newburyport, and it is changing it um in my opinion for the worse um to do this all over town. And so I would just like to reiterate um what the attorney has, uh Shaheen has said, and also my neighbors, that um this so-called addition, the size of this so-called addition and the um uh the, the effect it will have on parking um is just, just unacceptable. We ourselves do not have a driveway. We are uh park on the street. The alley that is next to our home uh used to be an alley that went through to Boardman. Obviously, those, that portion of the property has been sold off uh to various neighbors, and so we are forced to park on the street and tandem parking, as I know from experience and having lived here thirteen years, uh people don't like it. So they will park on the street rather than move cars and park in tandem in a driveway. So I would just like to reiterate that for all the points raised um by my neighbors and myself in previous meetings, um nothing here has been resolved. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Um recognizing uh Mr. Jim McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, um you can unmute your mic and uh you have the floor.
Uh good evening, Chairman Champetti and members of the board. Uh this is Jim McCarthy. I live at seventeen Russia Street, and I would like to speak in favor and support of the project uh as proposed at twenty-two, twenty-four Olive. Um I'd like to briefly just touch on five areas: zoning, the architecture, the historic old house, uh what the alternatives might be if this is not approved, and what the code used to be before we changed it maybe, I don't know, ten years ago. Um as the board knows, the crux of zoning is light air, and uh that speaks directly to public health. And um by definition, the numbers in the zoning code are what we have agreed on as uh what meets um the requirements for light and air and public health. Since this project is not creating any new conformities, it meets those requirements. Uh the second thing I'd like to talk about is um the architecture of the addition. Um this process initially, the initial proposal, um I didn't find very attractive at all. Um the process was they went to historic, the um proposal was changed uh with much better fenestration than the building that you see now. The thing I like uh most about the architecture of this building that was traditionally not done um in additions is the building is substantially smaller than the original structure, and I don't know how you could argue that by looking uh when you look at the top-down view that was presented uh by council. Um secondly, the one that's even most impressive to me is that this structure will be four feet lower than the existing structure, and the existing structure is well below what zoning, zoning allows. So um I think architecturally, they've um done a really good job with this proposal. Um the third component I'd like to talk about is a historic old house. Um I've been a member of the Preservation Trust, trust almost all the twenty years I've lived here. I really like what they do with respect to trying to respect old houses. This house is in the D-Cod, but um I'm nervous that elements of it might get um tainted. I particularly like that the, they want to take the old additions off the back to expose those two windows that are on the bottom. And I particularly also like that the developer is uh proposing to keep the chimneys because those are the first things that normally go. And in addition, to add a chimney on the new structure to match the other one. So I really like that the current proposal respects the um existing historic house. Um when it comes to the alternatives for the project, I'm really nervous that if this isn't approved like this, it will come back under the single-family rules, which I believe will be by right. Um you have the zoning enforcement officer here. She can comment to that, but I wish the, the um board would beat that up. And um because I'd really hate to see it come back as a large, one-family house with a three-car garage. And uh finally, the state code, before we changed it, um this five-hundred-foot rule, I participated in its adoption years ago. Um the rule used to be, as long as you created no, no, new nonconformities, that you could expand um by right. And it was really egregious what was happening, so we put this in place um um so that the proposals, so that there'll be some discretion by the zoning board. And I think the process has worked. They went to historic, the plan is improved, it's not massive, it's not out of scale with the neighborhood, and I urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Um Mr. uh Mika Donahue, uh you have the floor.
Thank you. Um thank you to the members of the board. Um I think that uh the, the comments are um, you know.
Donahue, I'm sorry, if you could just give uh your address.
Sorry, I guess, Mike Donahue, sixteen Olive Street. I think that the um, you know, I'll make a similar point, um but with the opposite outcome here as the previous speaker, uh Mr. McCarthy. The, what, what was done in the past to fill these lots in this neighborhood um was clearly not in the best interest of the public and therefore remedied by this five-hundred-square-foot addition um limit for which, you know, and uh uh permit is required um to exceed. And um as stated earlier by Tom Hayward, Hayward Adams and others, the, the fact that um other neighbors have recently added modest additions that were reviewed by the board, approved, um built and supported by neighbors is just absolutely the opposite case with this um development. There's uh certainly a reasonable compromise here, something that um you know, the neighbors, developers, and the zoning board could hopefully um all get on board with something, you know, like a one-story addition, uh thousand square feet, something that is not going to um overwhelm the lot uh and um and further um block the light and air uh that the neighbors are hoping to avoid. So on the uh, you know, certainly, you know, options here on the table, we hope that um you know, those mistakes of the past will be learned from and remedied um so that the zoning board can help control the future um going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Um and uh recognizing, it looks like our last hand up for the moment, unless there are others, is uh Mr. Thomas Colterjohn. Mr. Colterjohn, you uh, you have the floor, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we, we can hear you.
Thank you. Tom Colterjohn, sixty-four Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The trust continues to oppose this project in its current form. It still needs to be reduced significantly in size. The applicant clearly did not listen to the ZBA member comments based upon his response to change almost nothing. It would have a detrimental impact on this historic neighborhood if it were approved. The property lacks over four thousand square feet to be in compliance with zoning. This would be a good project in another neighborhood, but not here. This proposal distorts the corner lot to become more dominant and intrusive. You have heard comments from many neighbors and abutters who are not in favor of this project. Please listen to them and either turn down this proposal or continue this hearing in a way to substantial reduction in addition size. We would love to see the historic homes restored and a modest addition added. This developer is perfectly capable of doing so, but needs to listen to your direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colterjohn. Uh and uh Ms. Badger, I see your hand uh still raised. Do you wish to be heard again, ma'am, or, or is that just um left up? Um I see that hand is uh down now. Thank you. Um seeing no further hands, uh give another moment, going once, going twice. Any further comment before I close this portion of the hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the uh public comment portion of the public hearing, and we will move now to questions from the board. And uh if uh my colleagues uh might indulge me for a moment, I'd like to ask uh the first question, if I could, of um uh Ms. Blancher, our, our city um zoning administrator and enforcement officer. Um Ms. Blancher, we had heard comments from, uh I believe, um one of the speakers, uh I believe it was Mr. McCarthy with respect to a possibility as a single. Uh I'm just curious, uh since you're here, and I appreciate you being here. Um could you talk with us about what that might look like? That's not necessarily any motivating factor for myself or any one of us perhaps, but, but I think it's part of the conversation, so I'm interested if, if you have a moment.
Well, I, uh forgive me, I don't recall the specific setbacks here, and I'm having trouble seeing them on my small screen, but if, if the setbacks are conforming for a single family for the front lot, which it appears that they are, uh and, and the other setbacks, and the lot size is conforming to a single family, which I believe it is, and I believe it has the appropriate frontage, then yes, an extension can be made that does not extend any of the existing nonconformities. It could be made with a building permit. Um I certainly would reserve the right to go back and look at the application as I would with any when a particular of it changes. But uh Mr. McCarthy is correct that there are certain aspects of it that this particular form could very possibly be built if the use were a single family.
Okay, I mean, I appreciate that, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Certainly, within our purview as uh zoning board members, we deal with what we have before us, not the, not the possibilities beyond us, but um it, it's, you know, certainly was of interest enough for me to ask, so thank you. Um with that, um moving through questions from the board, we'll begin with uh Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. I have a question on the connector, the, the hyphen um that connects the two structures. Is um, is there any function to that hyphen um other than providing a covered entrance into each of the structure, like each of the structures? So is there any common area between the two structures that's, that resides in that hyphen?
Uh, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh there's living space on the second floor of that hyphen that belongs to the new unit, and Ernie, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But in, in the, the living space on the second floor belongs to the second unit, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
There is a common, there is a common vestibule on the first floor on Russia Street. So there is a small common area. And then there is living space for both units in the hyphen on the first floor.
Living space on the first floor?
Usable habitable space. So there are mudroom foyer entrances for each unit in the hyphen.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And from earlier iterations, just remind me, or maybe the board too, the pinch on the new structure in the back, that was that in response to earlier considerations for size, scale, and massing that were brought up?
The pinch meaning the.
Narrowed part, yeah.
I think that it was done in consideration of when we went to historic and those modifications were made to, you know, to not have a flat wall building back there. So that those design changes were made when we went to historic.
I just, I thought that was the case. I just, it's been a while. So I have no further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton, and by turning me, feel free to answer any questions directly, any board member.
Thank you.
But thank you for the, for the adherence to procedure, but by all means, just feel free to respond.
Yeah, I have a question. It's kind of come up several times in the comments about the changes between what we're looking at here and what we looked at in our last hearing. I understand the change to the parking. Instead of having the two parking areas on Russia Street, you're now proposing to only have one in about the same location as the current parking on Russia Street and to expand the tandem parking. So I get that. Are there other changes that I missed? Or is that the only change you're proposing from our last meeting?
No, Mr. Swanton, that's, those are the only changes we proposed.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate, I know a lot of people spoke out about adding additional parking on Russia. And so I do appreciate you being responsive to that suggestion. We got a letter encouraging us to go look. And it stressed the fact that the fence is coming down along Russia Street. And that's also was spoke to in some of the letters we got too. I mean, the letter can come down, but it's not really part of the proposal here. I mean, I mean, the fence, the fence, the fence could go back up, right? I mean, I guess I don't quite understand this thought about, well, we're going to take down the fence. But the fence could be re-erected at any point in the future, couldn't it?
Well, unless you made a condition of the decision that there not be a fence placed along Russia Street, our proposal is not to have a fence along Russia Street for the very purpose of opening it up. So the applicant would be amenable to a condition that says consistent with the plan, there won't be a fence proposed along the perimeter of the, of the lot along Russia Street or Olive Street.
Okay. All right, well, that's, that helps me understand that. Okay, I mean, basically I asked, I asked a lot of questions last time about last time's proposal. The only change here really is the parking. So I guess I have no additional questions. So I, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chandler, questions from you?
Chair, I've got, I've got no new questions. I think from our previous discussions, all have been answered and I understand the proposed changes. So I've got no new questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler and Mr. Bennet.
I have no further questions. I think we explored this proposal in some detail back in December.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I, you have no additional questions raised as a result of the change to parking that haven't already been answered or at least asked. So without any further questions from board members, I'm going to go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and we're going to move into deliberations. And as the board members know, this is a special permit for non-conformity. So as such, I ask that we tailor our deliberations around the criteria for a special permit subject, it's detailed in section 9B2, of course, of our zoning ordinance. In order to grant the special permit, our board must find that there will be no, no addition of a new non-conformity. The project does propose to add over 500 square feet to a non-conformity, but the proposed addition itself does not create a new non-conformity. The board must also find that the application will not substantially more, be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming user structure. So with that, we'll go into deliberations, beginning with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Champetti. I'm still struggling where it was last time. I certainly appreciate the applicant adjusting the mind map. I think it was my, my concern when showing the scale on that mind map that the addition didn't look to be quite as up to scale. And I do believe that was adjusted very well and very accurately. So I do appreciate that concern and I do, as Mr. Swanton mentioned, I appreciate the fact that hearing about the parking, the parking was heard and an adjustment has been, has been offered. So clearly, looking at this project, it's been determined that the proposal doesn't add any new non-conformities. That's not the issue I think that the board had, nor that's the issue that the neighbors and abutters have. It comes down to the proposal not being more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming user structure. And the size, scale, and massing is a sticking point here, has been with everyone and has been with me. But I appreciate the use of the hyphen as a way to protect the historic integrity of the house and it's been approved by the Department of Interior. And, and it certainly fits the bill. I may ask about the, the common use there because it seemed just to be a covered entryway into each unit separately. And there is a little bit of a common area that could be a mudroom. I guess, which is fine, but when I look at that, it seems to be a connector connecting two separate buildings. And, and although I look at this, you know, you look at the map and you see the setbacks appear fine. I, you know, I did go down again today and brought the renderings and then tried to imagine this building jutting into the yard and into the backyard. And I still couldn't come to grips with the size, scale, and massing of this and the appearance that you have two structures with an attachment in between. And I'm still struggling with that nature of the proposal. And it contributes to my concerns about size, scale, and massing and, you know, blurring, obliterating the open air that exists on that lot for that property and for the neighbors. And so I'm, I'm still struggling with this because, you know, other than the parking being changed and, you know, any little, any little proof that concerns have been heard is helpful. Other than that, I don't see any change to size, scale, massing, and I'm still stuck on that. So that's where I am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton.
I don't really have anything to add to what my colleague just said. I think he summarized it quite well. Like we kind of said it last month and not a whole lot has changed. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Chair. I, I think my, my biggest concern is, is, you know, the residents of Newburyport. There seems to be an overwhelming lack of support for this application. I must admit, you know, walking the site and looking at the stakes that were recently put up, left to my own devices with the existing drawings and visiting the site, I could probably personally come to terms with this project as not being more detrimental to the neighborhood. With that said, however, it's hard to, it's hard to come to that conclusion in the face of the overall, the overwhelming lack of support by the neighbors. So I, I, like my colleagues, are struggling with supporting the application as presented. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chandler and Mr. Bennet.
Yeah. I think as I mentioned the last time, I, I find much to be said in a positive way about this project in the abstract. I, as my colleagues seem to end up in the same place. And what I guess motivates me and drives my decision is the, the fact that this is a significantly undersized lot for a two-family structure, for the expansion of what will be a two-family structure and what is currently a two-family structure. But to extend some 1,800 square feet strikes me as being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Even though one can, and I believe honestly, counsel has ably argued the factors that would cut the other way. But all things being equal, particularly given the feelings of the neighbors, I find that an 1,800 foot expansion in this case is substantially more, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So that's kind of where I'm coming out on this.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I have to say, I mean, I certainly admire and commend the efforts to architect and plan this structure in a way that seems, you know, at least historically respectful. I noted one of the comments, at least of one member of the public, Mr. McCarthy, who noted the preservation, reminded me of the preservation of chimneys, which we see far too few of in Newburyport, especially with the fact that there is no easy way to reconstruct and renovate the interior of a historic building built by construction standards that predate current modern building code standards without utterly destroying and eviscerating the interior of the building, including any chimneys and other elements. All of that said, you know, we've always had a history, at least in my experience on this board, of paying close attention to those presumably most acutely impacted. And by that, I mean the immediate abutters. And we've heard from many in this neighborhood who have been very vocal and consistently so in, in not being able to support the application, but not necessarily, as I heard from some, withholding support in every imaginable instance. I believe Mr. Colterjohn himself, I have notes reminding me of some of his comments, which were that in this form, it wasn't something he could support, which led me to conclude that perhaps there's additional work that can be done that can find some merit with the principal concerns of, hopefully, a majority of the folks that have voiced their concern and even opposition that live in the neighborhood. So I can't be unmoved by that. Still though, our standard is, among other things, is to find whether the application is substantially more detrimental than, than existing conditions in the pre-existing, not, you know, conditions in the, in the structure and in the neighborhood. And that's a high standard. I don't know how my other colleagues feel about that. But we are often moved by what we hear, boots on the ground, as it were. But I, I would say, let me suspend, I guess, any further deliberations because I want to circle back to anyone else who wishes to further deliberate on our board. Attorney Mead.
Mr. Champetti, may I?
Of course.
The applicant requests the board allow him to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, that's where I was going to go. I wanted to, before we marshaled into a motion and vote, I wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to revisit. Do you wish to just withdraw without prejudice? We can undertake that motion right now. Attorney Mead, was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Very good. Members of the ZBA, having completed our deliberations but not closed them, the applicant has asked that we consider a, a motion at their request to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And a second?
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chandler, seconded. A motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Chandler, calling the role in the applicant's request to withdraw the application without prejudice. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries and the application is withdrawn by the applicant's request without prejudice. Thank you, members of the public and Attorney Mead and members of the board for your patience in this. And we'll move on to our next application that is on our agenda. Bear with me a moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. The application of Alfred G. Clifford, the application is 156 State Street. This is a continuation, members of the ZBA, from a hearing on 12/28/21. There's three parts to the application. A variance document 21-1 to allow a 90 foot, to allow 90 feet of frontage where 120 feet is required for construction of a multifamily structure. And the second portion is to allow a multifamily use. This is a, this is a use change to change the, to allow multifamily use number 103 from its current use. And finally, to an application to demolish the pre-existing non-conforming structure and construct a new four-unit and accessory structure with non-conforming lot area. With that, may we hear from the applicant? I believe we have Attorney Sheen on behalf of the applicant.
This, this is Al Clifford. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, hello, Mr. Clifford. You have.
Thank you. And first of all, I'd like to thank the members of the planning office, Jennifer and Caitlin and Andy for their help with this project. And before I get into my presentation, I'd like to introduce Attorney Sheen to start things off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Mr. Sheen, Attorney Sheen, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Honorable members, my name is Bill Sheen. I practice law in Peabody, Massachusetts, at 8 Essex Center Drive, representing tonight Alfred Clifford regarding his property at 156 State Street. You may recall that you entertained the, a hearing on Mr. Clifford's proposal. And at that time, among other issues, there was an issue regarding whether or not Mr. Clifford met the standard for a variance. And it was that inquiry that caused Mr. Clifford to contact my office. And the first thing that I did was become familiar with the property and made a determination in my own mind that I didn't think that a variance was required based on the present structure and the present use, which I saw as a light manufacturing use, based on assessors' records and other information. After I shared that with Mr. Clifford, we then, or he then had an opportunity to speak to the zoning administrator and also to the director of planning. And we have concluded, and I hope that this board will conclude, that the relief that Mr. Clifford seeks tonight and needs tonight is not a variance, but rather is a special permit for non-conformities and also a special permit for a multifamily residential use in this particular district. And so with that, let me just explain our position as to the relief that's needed with respect to the special permit for non-conformities. And you know the standard. The standard is a twofold standard. That is, that, that there be no intensification or extension of an existing non-conformity and that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental. What we have here is a, an existing structure, which is non-conforming in many regards. And the most immediate use of this property, which is as light manufacturing, so-called U602 in your table, that, that use is also non-conforming. So everything about the, the lot, the structure and the use are non-conforming. We need then to justify our proposal for the new use and the proposed new structure as satisfying the standard for non-conformities. Happily, the proposal of Mr. Clifford is going to eliminate. Happily, the proposal of Mr. Clifford is going to eliminate four present non-conformities. Side setback, rear setback, lot coverage and parking issues. There are two other existing non-conformities. They pertain to frontage and to lot area. And although the proposal of Mr. Clifford will not eliminate those non-conformities, it will substantially reduce those non-conformities. The existing frontage of the lot is ninety feet. That is seventy-five percent of the one hundred twenty-foot requirement for a multifamily in this district. Seventy-five percent instead of forty-five percent of the two hundred foot requirement for light manufacturing, which is the present use of this property. So we will substantially reduce the non-conformity as to frontage. Similarly, we will substantially reduce the non-conformity as to lot area. The lot area is sixteen thousand seven hundred sixty-four sque- uh, square feet. It will be eighty-four percent of the twenty thousand square feet that are required for a multifamily as compared to or contrasted with it being only thirty-four percent of the fifty thousand square feet, which are required for manufacturing use. So it is in the nature of that special permit for non-conformities, which is the relief that we seek tonight, together with the special permit for the multifamily use at one fifty-six State Street. And so I just wanted to introduce the, the difference in the nature of the relief sought and why that relief is, has been changed to the extent that there are questions after Mr. Clifford has gone on to explain his project. I'll do my best, Mr. Chair, to answer all of those questions. And with that, I'd like to turn the matter back over to Mr. Clifford.
Thank you, Bill. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, first part of my presentation will have to do with our work in Newburyport. I do this because I'm not that familiar with many of the members of the board. And I'd like to familiarize them with what we do and what we have done. It won't take terribly long. Next slide, please. Carter Street and Monroe Street. The Federalist is a renovation. The White House, the Gambrel Georgian is new construction. Next slide, please. This is a second empire mansard roof, new construction on Hamilton Way, off High Street at number two twenty-three High. Next slide, please. This is an Italian eight, early Victorian style, again on Hamilton Way, newly constructed. Next slide, please. This, most everybody would probably recognize. This is down the block from City Hall on the corner of Pleasant and Titcomb. These are three townhouses. The bow front architecture is taken from Louisburg Square on Beacon Hill. And I think complements the, the square very nicely. On the upper right, twenty-six High Road in Newbury, a federal for a new construction. And below it, forty-nine High Road in Newbury, seventeen sixty architecture Georgian manor home. Next slide, please. This home is at eighty-eight and a half High Street. It was the first federal revival design in Newburyport. And the upper right is also the same house. It's next to the old Todd House in the background, the brick. Below it is, again on Hamilton Way, a Greek revival style that we're just finishing at this moment. Next slide. This is the Compass Rose Inn on Center Street, a federal-style building that was done in two thousand and four. We continue to operate this. And we also own the Clark Courier Inn on Green Street, opposite the IC. And I think this is important because this shows our vested interest in the city and the well-being of the city. And everything that we do has been in Newburyport for the most part since nineteen eighty-three. Next slide, please. Now let's go into the existing property. Next slide. We're talking here about a much maligned property on Lower State Street. This is the port-sheet metal building. A light manufacturing structure. The current structure built in the late nineteen sixties. The right-hand slide shows the, the rear of it, which is right against the lot line. Next slide, please. Again, the rear of it. Only thing I'd like the board to take note of are the existing trees on the left. That'll come up later in our discussions. Also, on the lower right, if you would make note of the tree line against the lot line. That is between the port-sheet metal property and one fifty-two State Street. Next slide, please. Existing conditions here. It's located in a business district. And this is it's quite a departure from our residential districts in town. It's, it's quite a mixed area. We can't really think of it in the same terms as our residential districts because of the many uses and the many uses that are in that district. Now, as Attorney Sheen referenced, the current use requires fifty thousand square feet. The lot has sixteen thousand. Further to say, the use that it's currently being used for, light manufacturing, is not permitted at all in the business district. The frontage for it requires two hundred feet where ninety feet exists and the side setbacks are fifty feet where we have, next to nothing exists. The rear setback, the same. And those maximum lot coverage is over the prescribed amount. The demolition control district is not triggered in this situation. Next one, please. This is the site plan. And as you can see, the existing building is slammed directly against the back lot line and the two sidelines. I'd also like you to notice, if you look very carefully, you'll see the trees very faintly outlined on the edge of the lot. Those have been sighted by the engineers. They've been noted and the tree trunk size of each and every tree has been marked. That will come up later when we talk about privacy. Next slide, please. I want to go into a couple of alternative uses for the property. There, there's a reason behind this and I won't spend too much time on it. By right, alternative one. Someone can walk into that property tomorrow and use it as light manufacturing as long as they do not structurally change or enlarge the building. They would be allowed to do cosmetic improvements, put windows, doors, spruce it up, so it would look pretty good, actually. Next slide, please. This shows how it could be used with parking in front and light manufacturing in the back. Next slide. Again, from the street, parking in front, some sort of manufacturing facility in back. You could even take off a few of the lean-to additions because you'd be diminishing the non-conforming nature. Next slide, please. Now, by right, alternative number two. When I say by right, as we know, they do not need any approvals by, by the planning board, the zoning board of appeals for anything to do with these alternative uses as long as they stick to the zoning that is approved for the area. Now, in this case, a commercial developer or user could come in, tear down the existing building and build, among other things, a retail services, private education. Those are both allowed by right and the land as it sits would conform. Next slide, please. This shows, again, what someone could do by putting a commercial building in the middle, parking in front, parking behind, dumpsters on one side, lighting parking lot, lighting above, et cetera. Next slide, please. This shows a, that type of a building as you look at it from State Street. Next slide, please. Again, just another view of a similar type of structure. Next slide. And finally, something nearer State Street with the setback necessary for good use for retail services. Next slide, please. Let's get into the proposed project. We had the opportunity here to adaptively reuse this commercial site that has potential other uses but adaptively reuse it for residential. Residential that would blend in with everything on that side of State Street and would be conducive, most conducive to the neighborhood that it is in. Next slide, please. What we have come up with is a Greek revival design face to the street on the front unit so that as you drive by going up or down State Street, it looks just like a Greek revival home, single-family house. It doesn't jump out at you as a, anything other than that. Next slide, please. The other way, going down State Street. Same type of thing. You see the facade. You see a sunroom on the side. You see the trees that exist. Does not stand out. Next slide, please. So our proposed project involves demolishing the existing structure and constructing a new four-unit multifamily dwelling with an accessory structure, which is a garage. Now, this is the way we get to a residential use in this location. There's only one way that this location can be used for residential purposes under zoning, and that is for a multifamily. And the only way that multifamily works economically is for four units as we have designed it. So we would be changing the use from light manufacturing to multifamily. And we, we eliminate four non-conformities while we do not create any new ones. And we increase the various dimensional controls that you see here. Each unit will have a two-car garage for parking as well as a driveway in front of it. Next slide, please. This is a site plan, the engineered plan. The dark strip is the driveway. The lighter one is the, is the building. The entire project fits within the dimensional controls of multifamily in all respects. The building, the four units. The last one has a garage off to the left. The others are integral. And that's what extends the building, basically. That's what is the, that's what creates the extension of the building from front to back is the inclusion of the two-car garages with each unit that obviously elongates, but still within the dimensional controls the proposed structure. Next slide, please. Now, when we met with the butters, which we've done a couple of times, concern of drainage came up. And we've addressed that. In fact, we've gone over the top, so to speak, because on a small project like this, the city does not require any stormwater management system. And you're, you're left to your own devices, pretty much, as to how you deal with stormwater. We have decided, however, that we will produce an engineered self-contained stormwater plan, which means that all of the runoff from the roofs from the driveway will all be, excuse me, underground to the city stormwater management system in State Street. There will be no danger of any drainage issue. The site is going to be graded, again, with engineered proposed grades specifically to keep stormwater runoff away from adjacent lands. Now, we will have sixty-four hundred square feet of open space and over five thousand square feet of the open space is dedicated to grassy area. This is important for drainage also. Next slide, please. Now, the stormwater plan, if you can see the, the dotted pinkish lines, they run around the perimeter of the building. They're all interconnected. There are two catch basins in the driveway. All of this is engineered and we would look forward to having this as part of our approval, that the engineered drawing be part of our permit. And it all goes into the stormwater system right in front of our property on State Street. The engineered plan is also going to be reviewed by the city engineer who has made recommendations as to what might be done, even though he self, he admits that they do not have any purview over it. So he will be involved in, in recommending and overseeing what we do. Next slide. Now, the landscape plan, this is, this is critical to some of the comments that have been made by our butters. Again, very important, the trees here with the curved lines, so to speak, whatever you would call them, representing the canopy of the trees. The sighting of those trees is right off the site plan. Again, they have been, they have been placed by the engineers who did the survey of, of the lot. And even including the trees off our lot in back. Those are all going to stay. We're not removing any trees. And in fact, we're adding a significant amount of, of arborvitae trees along both sides and the back of the property. We've made it very clear to the neighbors that we would very much enjoy working with them as to the placement of those trees and also participating with them in the replacement of the fence between one fifty-two on the upper side of the drawing, one fifty-two State Street and our property at one fifty-six. So between a new fence, which again can be as high as they want if the two parties agree and the additional ground plantings. And these are substantial ones. These are being brought in at ten to twelve foot high to start with. And they will grow to fifteen feet very quickly. The privacy issue, I think, has been dealt with. Next slide, please. This is a very stark picture, as most elevation pictures are, but it's there for a reason. Next slide, please. This is the same view, exactly the same view from one sixty-two State Street. Standing on the front doorstep of the condo unit at one sixty-two. Standing on the front doorstep of the condo unit at one sixty-two. Those are the, that's the magnitude of what we're going to bring in and put along under the existing tree, which is in the middle. And there's another existing tree out of sight to the left. Next slide, please. This stands back quite a bit further, that same size, same size, excuse me. But again, you're looking at a fairly pleasing. Site where you have significant plantings, some mature trees. And the fence in front. Next slide, please. This is another view from one fifty-two, the back, the the unit number four. Uh, Miss Sullivan's unit. This is the corner. Now, the building is right on the fence, the existing building. It will be set back approximately twenty feet off each side. Next slide. Same view with existing trees that were sighted by the surveyors. And if you look just over the fence line, you'll see the arbiviti plantings. That we will add so that there will be literally no way of seeing our building from her deck. Next slide, please. This is another view from one fifty-two, again. Kind of stark with nothing there. Next slide. This is with the existing trees. To the right, you see the arbiviti. And we're perfectly willing to plant more along there. This is what we hope to achieve in working with the Butters is where they would like privacy. And privacy works both ways, obviously. It helps. Uh, the people on either side. So we're very, very open to doing as much of that as the folks would like. Next slide, please. Density. This has been another, another issue that's come up. And. I'd like to start. By pointing out. That we have applied under the multifamily use. That is a designated use in the zoning bylaw. Of the four unit multifamily structures in Newburyport, eighty-seven percent have less. Than the square footage per unit that we have. The average density of a four-unit multifamily is two thousand two hundred, or almost double. In our case. Now diagonally across the street from us is the Smart Growth Overlay District of Newburyport, just across the street. That establishes the maximum density. Of two thousand feet. Can't have any more land per unit. In fact, you get incentivized to have less. Very dense. The third one is a new one. This was a law just passed a year ago in January of twenty-one. And it states, not recommends. Newburyport shall have one district. Allowing multifamily by right at a minimum density of fifteen living units per acre. That translates to twenty-seven hundred square feet per unit. And that is within a one-half mile radius of the tree station. Now, our property is well within that, but I'm not suggesting that it applies to us. I wanted to bring this to the attention of the board to show the concentration on density. That is happening in that part of the city. The smart growth area may satisfy this requirement. But there's definite, uh, definite question. As to whether the smart growth area is sufficiently large to satisfy the state requirement. That has not been ironed out yet. If it's not, there's only one way for that. Geographic area to go. And it's again within a half mile, the MBTA station has to be an entire district. And chances are it may come across State Street, but again, not cited at this point. Next one, please. Okay, quickly, the city of Newburyport, uh, has a hundred and forty parcels as multifamily. Only seventeen have greater dense, uh, greater density, excuse me, greater square footage per unit. Uh, than we do. Sixty-one percent of the parcels on lower stage street, that's from Greenleaf to Parker, are multi-unit structures. Either two-family or multifamily. And the citywide multifamily density average is two thousand six hundred sixty-seven square feet per unit. Eighty-eight percent of the multifamily structures have a density, uh, less than ours. Uh, excuse me, yeah, less. The average number of units for multifamily within the city is six. Next slide, please. Okay, as you're looking down. We are the second one down, just one fifty-six state. You'll notice all of these are condo developments on this side of State Street. Six units, four units, three units, five units, six units. Very much in keeping with what we're doing. The one at one seven, what, one seventy-two state, very similar to what we're doing. We fit in very well in this context. We not, we're not outsized whatsoever. Next slide, please. This is interesting. This is. This shows two things. Number one, it shows the reduced frontage associated with the existing multifamily buildings. On the lower side of State Street. If you start right against State Street itself, you'll see numbers seventy-one. Ninety, thirty-two, one oh eight, those are the frontages. All the way down State Street and they're all, uh, less than the required amounts. But the second thing that's interesting in talking about open space. Where we are at one fifty-six, directly behind us, the small circle that says open space. There is nothing behind us for a quarter of an acre all the way to Cherry Street. It's wooded with a small open area of parking. So we are not, the the windows on the back of our building look out at this wooded area. Likewise, across the street is a huge multi-acre wooded area. Lots of space, lots of openness around this property. Next slide, please. Now, we had, we made a change to the building. Uh, we took into concerns of the neighbors and privacy and made adjustments. The back unit. We've taken the top gable end off, reduced the square footage, taken those two windows at the, on the side of the gable. Uh, on the back of the building. Uh, and we have produced what the redesign shows on the bottom. Where no of the, none of those upper windows are looking out toward one sixty-two. And everything looks to the rear, except the front facade, of course, but the other windows to the rear of the building. Our intention to preserve all the existing boundary trees. And we were looking to strategically plant new screening along the boundary lines. Next slide. This shows another view. Of those two windows up in the left that were a privacy issue for the people in one sixty-two. The condo unit at the end. We've taken that away. Next slide, please. Again, it's gone now. And the square footage associated with it is gone. Next slide, please. Attorney Sheen, I'd like to have you just, um, touch on this part as we, as we sum it up. Hello, Attorney Sheen.
Uh, Mr. Chair, are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Attorney Sheen. You're welcome to, uh, to add to, um, Mr. Clifford's presentation as you see fit.
Thank you very much. Uh, we've taken care of the first of the two standards, that is that. Uh, we are not intensifying or extending any existing non-conformity with taking, we're, we're eliminating four and substantially reducing the other two. Uh, as to the second standard, the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, for all of the reasons that you've heard from Mr. Clifford. Uh, we are removing an encroaching, non-conforming cinder block building with a corrugated metal roof. To four conforming handsome townhouses. We are replacing a manufacturing use that no longer fits, uh, where it is now. Uh, with a residential use which most certainly fits in the neighborhood. We've taken care of the drainage as Mr. Clifford has referenced. The landscaping and the trees, uh, have, uh, designed to, uh, increase the privacy situation there. Uh, all in all, what we have done, I would submit respectfully. Most certainly fits the neighborhood. Not only will it not be substantially more detrimental, it will improve the neighborhood. Uh, and with that, I think that Mr. Clifford may just want to touch on, uh, or I can touch on, uh, the. The second special permit, that is, the, the various, the standard by which a special permit is issued. For multifamily, uh, use in the B-one district. Uh, and we can, Al, I'll let you run right through them, but you've got them right there by way of the bullet points.
No, go, go right ahead.
All right. So, uh, what we have is the proposed project will be in keeping with the, uh, with the neighborhood. Uh, with the homes along the state, along State Street. Uh, what we are doing is we are replacing a non-permitted use with a permitted use. Albeit a use that requires a special permit. Uh, there can be no question that we are in keeping with the intent. Of the zoning ordinance, because after all, multifamily is allowed here by way of a special permit. Uh, we're taking care of all of the parking, there's sufficient parking. There are sidewalks, sidewalks with one along both sides of of State Street. Uh, we're in close proximity to the R-three district, the real lot line of Butts, the R-one district. Uh, and what we have here is a, uh, is a mixture of, uh, of residential styles and residential homes. Uh, we suggest that this is consistent. And promotes that that neighborhood generally, and it will not impair the integrity or character. Of this district or the adjoining districts. And for all of those reasons, we would ask that you consider and grant. Uh, the special permit for non-conformities. Uh, I, I take it, Al, that, uh, you're going to talk about the, the criteria for the special permit for the multifamily?
No, I hadn't, uh.
Okay.
I hadn't.
I can deal, I can deal with those. Uh, we have submitted a, a memorandum and a revised memorandum, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the special permit for the use that is multifamily. Uh, and the various criteria are as follows. Uh, the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations, uh, as I indicated by way of a special permit. Uh, the requested use, uh, is it essential or desirable for the public convenience or welfare for all of the reasons that. Uh, we have set forth, we would suggest that this project does. Uh, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Uh, in fact, uh, with a residential use as opposed to a. Manufacturing or a retail use, we're actually helping those, uh, those situations, it would be less traffic. Uh, and less, uh, concern with pedestrian safety. Uh, the requested use will certainly not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other system, uh, within the city. Uh, you heard Mr. Clifford detail, uh, how he's going to make sure he works with the city engineer with respect, uh, to drainage. Um, there are no special regulations, uh, other than the special permit for the multifamily use. Uh, as I indicated, we're not impairing the integrity or character of the district. Uh, we're not creating an excess of any particular use that, uh, here, what we're doing is. Uh, with especially with respect to the density calculations that Mr. Clifford has provided. Uh, what we're proposing here is consistent with what zoning is looking for here. The proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And we are not going to be conducting any use which emits any dangerous, noxious, injurious or otherwise objectionable fire. Uh, hazards. So with all of that said, I would suggest, uh, respectfully that. We have met the criteria for both of the special permits which we seek from this board. The board can so find and we ask the board to so find and grant the relief requested. That is a special permit for non-conformities and a special permit for multifamily residential use at one fifty-six State Street. We thank you very much and hopefully between Mr. Clifford and me, we can answer your questions.
Okay, uh, thank you, Attorney Sheen, and thank you, uh, Mr. Clifford. Uh, was there anything else, uh, Mr. Clifford before we moved on to, uh?
Just a couple of points, and it'll be very short. Uh, Caitlin, if I could go back to slide thirty-eight, please. That one, yep. Okay, ours is the second one down. The current footprint of the new building, excuse me. The current footprint of the port sheet metal building, the non-conforming, not permitted use. Is seven thousand six hundred square feet. The proposal that we have. Um, is six thousand seven hundred sixty-one squares feet, actually a smaller footprint on the lot. Uh, in our proposal. Also, I would mention that with regard to the surrounding properties, which are condos. We are. Lower in height than the ones at one fifty-two, both front and rear. And we are almost exactly the same as the ones at one sixty-two. So the scale, the height fits into the area. It was designed to do so. And the distance to a Butters is all quite similar, between forty-five and fifty feet. From the buildings in all directions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Clifford. And with that, I will close the presentation portion of the public hearing and. Ask, uh, our planning director, Mr. Port, to put up the, uh, public comment slide. Thank you, Andy. Uh, and I will start to take questions, I'm sorry, public comments, uh, from anyone who wishes to speak. Uh, I will recognize Ms. Linda Dolmetsch first. Uh, Ms. Dolmetsch. Uh, if you can hear me kindly, unmute your mic and just give your name and address to, um, our keeper of the minutes and you have the floor, man.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Linda Dolmetsch. I'm a direct butter at one fifty-two State Street, Unit One. And I do want to acknowledge that Mr. Clifford met with some, um, of, uh. The neighbors and expressed his intention to agree to work with us with trees and fencing, and I very much appreciate that. Um, so I wanted to acknowledge that I have lived here for almost, um, twenty years next to the. Light manufacturing as, uh, it referred to port sheet metal without any impact really on my quality of life. Um, and so the, um, the kind of, you know, threat of commercial development next door does not. Really bother me quite as much as the density of that fourth. Unit, uh, which I think is too much with that lot, um, in spite of all the. Square footage, um, issues, the, um. Density, the view, um, you know, I think is still too much. There's, uh, impact on the privacy, so I'm not opposed to the variance of use. Um, in, and I've not adjusted yet to whether this is permit or variance yet. We'll have to study that. Um, from, you know, commercial to residential to multifamily, but I do believe that three units. Um, are the proper amount and I would much have preferred to see a plan for three units as opposed to these possible. Kind of commercial buildings. Um, so it's that end unit that, um. You know, I see some changes have been made and I appreciate that, um, but I still think the lot density is, uh. Is right for three and I'm opposed to four, so thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Dolmetsch, uh, recognizing, uh, Gary Hodgeal and, uh, forgive me, Mr. Hodgeal if I'm mispronouncing your name, but. You can hear me, I just kindly unmute your mic and, uh, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, close enough. Um, okay, so. I'm looking, uh, once again, Mr. Clifford's, uh, proposed layout. And what bothered me the first time I saw this.
Sir, if I could, I apologize, if I could just ask you. Sir, if I could, I apologize, if I could just ask you, if you wouldn't mind just.
Yeah, one fifty two State Street, unit two in Newburyport.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so basically, when I first saw this layout, I was saying. It is veritable footprints of the entire property is what it looks like. Now, I'm not talking strictly about the structure, but when you take into consideration the pavements. The driveway and the parking spots and all of that. And the fact that the backyard of these units are likely to have a patioed area for entertainment. Barbecuing and that sort of thing. There's small areas to begin with and there are stairs leading out there to begin with. So I assume that's what's going to happen. I come up with roughly a seventy percent coverage by non-permeable materials. Such as cement and structure. And that basically leaves in my calculations and all of these calculations were made up. They're all in the appendix, easy to read. It reduces the natural drainage that we currently have with port sheet metal, the old property, I should say. By forty five percent, that's the natural drainage. And I did hear a proposal or a promise that Mr. Clifford made about. The drainage treatment that's gonna be very important, whatever goes in there. Because by his own words, he said, if, you know. Our parking lot, our area started to flood, that we, that our only recourse after he sells all the units would be. We would have to sue the people at one fifty six State Street at that condo association. I guess the scale in terms of the height, I have no problem with. But the, I disagree with the humidity issue of the backside of those units. To the front side of our units, it's extremely close. If you look at the footprint. Of where that abutment is, the one fifty six to one fifty two abutment. And you can look at those, review those maps. I don't think you'll see any sides that are as close and as long. In our neighborhood, that looks anything like that. So the density and the height, I, I would say just the sheer density and the proximity of the units. Is causing an extreme loss of privacy, afternoon daylight loss. And any potential for open green space. You can see that the, the green space that was sited something like five or six thousand feet. But if you look at the map that snuck in like in these little crevices and the backside of the building. And, and he's claiming all of the backyard as open free space. Which, as I said, is likely, half of it'll likely be patioed over. So. Last thing I wanted to mention, because I don't know how this works, it's my first CBA meeting. The last thing I wanted to mention is the, the data items that are on this filing and the proposed plan. I don't know if there's supposed to be a variance or non-compliance or what the term is. But it says that there's twenty thousand feet that's required for this multifamily one oh three unit. And there's only sixteen thousand seven hundred odd feet of land there. And I find that in Mr. Clifford's presentation, he's comparing. Other non-compliances to this non-compliance. And it seems like there's so many non-compliances that, that's, that's the main metric. That's being used, this is not conformity, but compliance, we're not as non-compliant as all these other houses. So. Yeah, so I, I don't see a variance for that, for that going to sixteen thousand seven hundred feet. Versus a twenty thousand feet square foot requirement. I don't. I don't agree with the seventy percent lot coverage because of the cement. It's really seventy percent. And the setback. Okay, the minimum front setback in footage is set in the requirement for, for this multifamily. One oh, one oh three is twenty feet and it's actually six feet. And so I have to say for now.
Thank you, Mr. Hodgeal. Recognizing Anne Marie, I don't see her last name unless perhaps Marie is the last name. But Anne Marie, if you can unmute your mic, you have the floor.
All right, Anne Marie Vega, and I live one sixty two State Street, unit two. So it's adjacent to this, this proposed application. And the several points, I had a couple, but now that I've heard the whole presentation, I actually have a few more. So I understand we want to move from one zoning type to the other or within the same B one area. It's highlighted the port sheet metal or the current property is light manufacturing and it's out of conformity. It was born, it was, it was made in the sixties, which was stated by the attorney. So likely it was, you know, before the current zoning rules and regulations. So that should be taken into account. It's not as if it was just, you know, created or, or, or put in place. So I suppose it could continue on. And again, I think as one of the residents already mentioned, all of us are used to having that there. It's been there as a manufacturing facility of types since we all came. So if we want to change from the current. Zoning that we have to multifamily, my understanding is they are now asking for a special permit with variance. I'm asking the zoning board to then step back, take a clean piece of paper and say, okay, if you want to be in multifamily. You're asking for a special permit and you're asking for variances. If you want us to give, in any negotiation I ever do, there's a take, right? You bargain back and forth. So the density they're highlighting, I'd like to cover because to me, that's your gift back and forth. Give you less fringe, less setbacks, more coverage of property as long as you do the drainage. But let's look at that zoning and that density. Taking from Greenleaf to Parker, and if we are all familiar with the city, we know that there are some density areas within there. If we take from State Street High and walk down the street, it's all residential until we hit this property. On both sides of the, of the street. That's where we start getting some mixed use. So I'm for, sure, let's make it residential. Let's look at the local properties. If we look at slide thirty eight, I believe I had noted, he shows six, four, three, the different numbers of the condos. And those local properties. We provided from one sixty two, the calculations. If we look at the density of the immediately properties in the area. His density is way off, it's substantially different. We're looking for substantial impact. So I'm going to use substantial difference here as well. So if you take it down to three, it is still not aligned with those State Street properties. If we take his then financial. Problem that he mentioned, right? He needs four to break even. The properties and condo sizes of that size are going for at least a million dollars per property currently. Especially with two car garages in this area. Likely, and I had mine estimated, it's over a million. So he will get three million dollars from this. Proposed application and development. That should be sufficient to cur, to, to cover expenses and profit. If it's not, he should have recognized that before purchasing. So I think if we want to give, give and take, I think that's reasonable. He could do other commercial properties, he showed retail. He certainly, if he did the compass rose, he could do an in, for example. So there are alternatives, so that financial piece, I think, needs to be alleviated out of the conversation. And then finally, if we do go forward, I still have a substantial impact. Yes, we had port metal. Yes, you saw the fence. I don't see port metal so much from my home. Out of the bedrooms that I mentioned, the two bedroom. That has the windows facing that way, in the evening when you go to bed, you could see there was something there. Nothing looking into the windows. The picture he showed with the fence and then Abrevi. Fantastic. When I park my car, I will see Abrevi. That's not the issue. It's second floor to second floor. And if you could look at all of the pictures he showed, second floor to second floor, you can see it. And since I can see the rooftop of the current port sheet metal, that means I will see into those homes. And those homes will see into my bedroom. So that is actually a privacy issue. On the other side, he's proposing taller trees, perhaps that's the answer. But again, I do not believe that he has the ability to do that with his driveway. Don't know for sure. So those are my, my high level. I think, you know, he also talked about the smart, I think I want to highlight that as well. That I think it's called smart growth. If we look across the street, it is, yes, there's some open land. It's a cemetery. Followed by a single family home, followed by retail. So what that actually did was open up the area for Hines and that development. So I think we need to take all the facts that were stated and you better than I am sure as the zoning board know why things were done. But I do feel like the way the facts are being presented are stating a, a case differently than maybe perhaps unbiased. Maybe I have a bias, they have a bias. And so I asked the zoning board to really, you know, think through all the facts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vega. And recognizing Mr. Roy Bean. Mr. Bean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Roy Bean. I live at one sixty two State Street, unit one. I try to keep this brief. I want to echo the same concerns about the density. And just reference that if we looked at. The abutting properties and go up and down the street a little bit from one sixty two to one seventy four. If we took an average of acres per unit, it would come out to about point one five one. Acres per unit and currently with the four unit proposal for Mr. Clifford. He is at point one oh four five. So even at. Moving from four units down to three units, he would still be below that average that I referenced of one five one. Point one five one, he would be point one three nine acre per unit. Still below the density of the surrounding properties on, on the same side of the street. So I echo the density concerns from everybody and in particular for us at one sixty two State Street. That fourth unit is in direct view as the last person. Mentioned is direct view of our condos here. While Mr. Clifford mentioned about the height of the units being similar and I can't speak to the exact measurements comparing the heights. I will say that the units at one sixty two are two floors of living space. Whereas his fourth unit in the back appears to be a, a three floors of living space. With that, the dormer with the windows off the back. Not to mention that we also have that third or the fourth garage, the detached garage in the back of the property. That adjusts those setbacks that I think one of the gentlemen from. One fifty two had mentioned that the setbacks are a little different. That is that detached garage is only six feet off of the back property lines and roughly six feet off of the. Our abutting property line at one sixty two State. I appreciate the fact that he has eliminated one of the dormers in that fourth unit to try and. Allay some of the concerns we have with privacy of that fourth unit, but I still think the density is too much. The trees, the Abrevi's he is proposing are going to be on the north side of a. Tall fence currently, the fence is at least six feet tall. Actually haven't measured the fence that in between the two properties. And our Abrevi's that he's proposing are, require six hours of full sun. So I can't imagine they're going to grow very well on the north side of a fence there. As well as in the new proposal, the Abrevi's he has planted are in the turnaround area. For that detached garage. They are actually on what was in the past proposal. Elevate or. Property description, the proposed landscape plan, where the actual turnaround is and you can still see it a little bit. But the, whoever is in that fourth unit's garage will not be able to back out and turn into that space. They will have to either back all the way out the driveway or have a very small car that can turn around in the space that's in the garage. Because of the Abrevi's that are planted on what used to be a driveway space. Which is exactly where our property looks at their fourth unit. So I think the privacy concerns will still exist. Despite those trees of, that are only going to grow to about fifteen feet. Again, as the last caller had mentioned that. From our driveway, it won't be that bad, but we'll still be looking at the properties. At their second floors from inside our properties, we will be looking directly into there and then looking directly into our properties. So those are my continued concerns with this proposal. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Recognizing Mr. Jim McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, you, you have the floor.
Good evening again. This is Jim McCarthy, seventeen Russia Street. I want to speak in support of the project at one fifty six State Street by Mr. Clifford. Mr. Clifford started off the presentation with some of the projects he's permitted and done over the last twenty years. And I would like to say that I've watched most of the permitting and the construction of those projects and I'm grateful that. We have somebody of his reputation in our community. I'd like to, there's three things that strike me as good about the proposal. One is the use change. Another one is the streetscape improvement and the third one is the huge improvement and setbacks. And I want to touch on each one of those briefly. I, it is my hope that Newburyport eventually evolves into a correction of villages. I imagine that one of our village centers, as the rotary gets redeveloped, that will be a village center. So to change the use from light manufacturing to residential density. In this location is an excellent use. It will allow walking into the village center. And it will highlight one of our core strengths, which is walkability. In addition to the, the change of use will bring much less traffic. If it's one thing I learned over twenty years of observing what gets built is. Residential uses are much less intense than anything industrial or retail. The second thing is this, I think the streetscape is going to be vastly improved by bringing the building up to the street. And with the little picket fence he showed and the improved replaced brick sidewalk. It's going to make the streetscape look much better and it's going to read exactly like all the other facades going down the street on that side. I know he doesn't have the frontage required, but the proportion of the, the building. That ratio of the front of the building to the frontage is pretty consistent all the way down that side of the street. And it will read the same and be much more pleasing and much more pleasing for a pedestrian to walk on, walk along. Last, I'd like to comment about the improvement of the setbacks. It seemed, I don't think the images he showed us justice to how bad the building is against the setbacks right now. If you look at the aerial images, that building is really wedged in the back. And the only way you're going to get anything to grow is to really bring the building off all the setbacks. So I think it's a tremendous improvement to move everything away from the edge. The use is actually the best, in my opinion, and it will vastly improve the streetscape. And I urge you to grant the permits that Mr. Clifford seeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Seeing no additional hands. I will give it another moment in case there's any additional hands. I see a hand raised. The moniker reads Cory and Tammy, if that is you. You can go ahead and unmute your mic and you have the floor. If you could just give your name and address for the record. And again, I do ask the courtesy of all of those wishing to speak during public comment in the interest of time. And so that everyone can have a, an opportunity to speak within reason. Do kindly try to keep your remarks to about two minutes. We've been running over every single one, but, and I grant discretion on that. So just keep that in mind if you could. Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will keep this brief. My name is Cory Prince. We are at one fifty two State Street, unit number three. I am here with my wife Tammy, who is next to me. We participated in the December meeting in which we had shared a number of comments and observations. I am certainly pleased to see that there have been a few accommodations that have been made by Mr. Clifford. have been a few accommodations that have been made by Mr. Clifford, particularly around uh drainage proposal in addressing uh the rear uh height of the last unit. Uh, I did want to return to a, a couple of things that I had mentioned and also provide one additional piece of comment here. Uh, one of the comments I made last time, and we've had a lot of uh conversation here, and I can echo the sentiments of many of my neighbors. I don't know where Mr. McCarthy came from, but uh, at least in terms of the people who are on State Street. Uh, the design and the density uh from a concern standpoint. Last time I brought up, one of the elements about the design there is a little bit deceptive is that there is a steady ridge line uh down the entire length of the project at maximum height. Uh, Mr. Clifford showed slide 34, uh, which seemed to show a proposed set of trees in arbivites. And it actually showed uh reductions in the roof lines uh that were basically at varying heights, which is not the case of the proposal. So I wanted to make sure that that was clarified, that I brought that back up. There seems to be no additional adjustment uh to the impact of that, and it's relatively monolithic. Uh, then the last couple of things I just wanted to touch on, uh, there seemed to be an implication that we were well within a half mile of the MP MBTA station. That is actually not the case. It's eight tenths of a mile. So it's a little over three quarters of a mile uh to the MBTA station. Uh, then outside of that, uh, last remark is there also, the, you know, due to the fact that it is three or four residences down towards the circle. Uh, the implication that we are, you know, right on the edge of the Smart Growth District, that's really happens down at Gordon's rugs and beyond, uh, and as it's kind of away from the opposite side of the street, and I think there's about four residences before you hit that district. So that was it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Uh, and uh, looking for any additional hands, uh, seeing no additional hands. Uh, let's see, I thought I just saw one. Um, going once, going twice. Um, ah, we have, it looks like there's a hand coming up and going down, Thomas. I believe it's Pulse, and forgive me if, uh, oh. Pulse, uh, if that is, uh, if you can hear me, uh, that is, and if that's you, feel free to unmute your mic and just, if you could kindly give your name and address. We'll go ahead and recognize you, uh, Thomas.
Yes, my name is Thomas Pelsu. I'm at 158 State Street. Uh, and we, we are a direct abutter. And this is my wife Barbara Oswald.
Yes.
Also at 158 State Street.
And thank you for taking our comments. We'll keep it brief. Um, so what we wanted to say is that uh we um certainly support this moving to a residential uh uh change, because even though Port Cheet Metal has been a great neighbor for us, we would like to have it be residential. We've lived here for 40 years. We think that uh Mr. Clifford's proposal of the architecture is very, very nice, and we think the brick sidewalk is a, is an improvement. But the proposal of four units in the multifamily is just too dense, and you will notice that there are no supporting letters or comments from direct abutters. The, the support of this is not from people that are going to live right next door to this. I would encourage Mr. Clifford to come back with a a three-unit multifamily proposal. And uh, we would be glad to think about that. Um, it certainly would be pleasing the front, the way the the building um that would be parallel to the street is very pleasing to the pedestrians and to people driving by, and the architecture is beautiful. But it is when you live on either side of it that you're looking at this massive building that we think needs to be um adjusted to have a three multi, uh, three-family multi-unit. So um, that's my thought. I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and did you want to say anything, Tom?
No, I think that's, uh, I think it's, it's all been well covered. It's just a, it's a density issue, and I did notice that uh uh, the people up the street from us, the condos up the street had some great light getting in their windows, and I'd like to see uh a proposal that, that uh was a little more broken up for them.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think that's pretty much covers it.
That's right. So thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Pelsu. Um, any uh other members of the public which to speak? Uh, seeing no additional hands, I am going to go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. And we will move on to questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the question about uh the driveway, is the driveway going to be asphalt?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, is it going to be some quick?
With catch basins in it.
Got it. Okay. Excellent. Um. Can you, um, there was a question that came up about the ridge lining of the buildings. And if you could pull up, uh, if you, if you're familiar with what slide that is, and maybe address that concern and explain uh whether or not there's a, is a break from the condos and then the built-in um garages.
I wasn't exactly uh clear on what that person was referring to. Uh, let's go back to um. No. Yeah.
I was looking back the other way with the arbivites. Maybe there was something where we're from the back of the lot looking.
Yeah. Okay.
And it looked like there were differences, but there were some.
Well, let's, let's go to.
We'll just discuss the actual plans. Are there differences in front to back?
Okay. Uh, if that's what he's referring to, uh, there is a difference in the ridge heights. It's hard to see with the black, but the ridge heights between the gables is lower. A lot of the reasons for how this is configured is governed by the zoning ordinance, which has as a part of it how multiple units shall be joined. And they're very, they're very strict about this. The eve heights have to be pretty much the same all the way around the building. It doesn't allow you to stagger much of anything. And this is, uh, and I don't know the the section of the zoning bylaw, but it has to do uh uh with multifamily buildings.
Okay.
And it had it. That's all I'll say about that.
Okay, fair, yep, fair enough. Um, and the other question that um, and have I forgotten it or scribbled it down and lost it? Um. Oh, at the, the end unit, um, I, I, I know that the original proposal, I think I had mentioned that you know, the, the concerns of the abutter with the uh with the extra floor there, and it was to accommodate for the fact that there wasn't a garage built off the end. It was freestanding, so to get the square footage similar. Um, you had to go up a little bit, and you made some attempts to help with the privacy, and I think everyone has said that's appreciated. Um, but the, the big question that keeps coming up is the density, three units versus four. And I know, you know, this isn't about laying out your financials, but can you, uh, in a roundabout way, why, explain why you're sure that three units doesn't work versus four?
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because that goes to the very heart of the situation. In order to get this into residential use, the only way we do it is multifamily. And a component of the project is of course the front-end costs. Now, this was a very unique property. It's not a parcel of land on a country road. This parcel had a going business on it, permitted with with by right other uses available. It had a building, a little bit nondescript, but able to be rehabbed on it. So, but these are very valuable commodities in Newburyport. A standalone retail, potential retail use, potential light manufacturing use, its own parking, its own building. It just does not exist in this small scale. So the value placed on that governed the, the entry cost of going into the project. Now, people will say, well, why did you do that? Well, I feel that this result is the best for the neighborhood. But obviously, I'm a businessman, and the backup is to turn it over to one of the commercial people who I bid against to get the property. Uh, I don't think that's the highest and best use, but if that's what I have to do, that's what I have to do. I hope that kind of answers your question. If not, I'll be happy.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I'll leave it at that for now. I'm not going to follow up on that. Um, at this point, I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, um. You know, I think the last time this project came up in December, we went very late. We heard a lot from um your butters, many very similar comments. Um, we started getting into it, and it was 11 o'clock, and we decided to postpone it. Uh, because of late hour, which I'm glad we did. That's a late hour. Um. I feel like we're back tonight with pretty much the same place. Where I don't hear anybody objecting in the neighborhood to having a multifamily use here. Um, the issue that almost everybody says, everybody that lives in the neighborhood says is density. Um, and, and I would like to give you guys a chance to respond to, I think, I think one of your butters sent in a, a table today. He referenced it to it, I know in his talk, and I wonder if, uh, Caitlin, you could put up the letter that came in from Roy Dean today, because it has the table in it that I'd like to give these guys a chance to um comment upon. Uh, because it talks right to the density. Um, yeah, that's the table. If you could just blow up a little table in the middle there. Um. So as I understand it, these are the other multifamily units on the street. Um, and there are three, six, three, five, and six units. There's the acreage, there's the acres per unit. And your project down below in the next line, 156 State Four-Unit Project has point one zero four five acres per unit. So I just would like to give you a chance to talk to this issue that all the neighbors keep bringing up again and again and again about, well, you'd be good, you know, why don't you do it a little smaller? Uh, and it does look like from this data that you're proposing something that's more dense than anybody else. Uh, what, what am I missing here?
Yeah, I, it would take me a bit to go over his, uh, the way he came up with that. Our density calculations uh comparing apples to apples, which uh is a little different. Um, they're all between 4,000 and 7,000 square feet per unit, excuse me, 4,000 and 6,000 square feet per unit. When I say all, the front part of one, uh, 152 State Street is a little bit of a hybrid. The three units on State Street are the only ones in the B1 district. The back three units are in R2, and they were built in R2, and their frontage is on Cherry Street. Now they're merged into the same association. But as far as comparing the zoning and what they build, i- it, it's distorted. If we take the front three units, which is the original State Street three units, then uh, that, they're at uh 4,700 square feet per unit. And the others range um up to five to six, between four and six thousand square feet per unit. And so I think we fit very well in that. I mean, we're not talking, the, the difference is 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, so you're saying the neighborhood is between 47 and six, and I, I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar with where you are on this, on the scale compared to the neighborhood. So are you in that same range, or are you smaller?
We are. We're 4,100 and uh 91.
Okay. So, I mean, a, an acre is 43,000 some odd square feet. I mean, I, I don't see how this math could work out quite so differently. I, I get the point on the immediate abutter who has some units in another zoning district. Um, but I don't understand how all the other ones, um.
And he's got 168 to 170 on there.
Yeah.
That's, that's an old house that was converted to three condos.
Yep.
And they have, I guess, a big backyard that goes way back. Uh, if you drive by it on the street, can't even see the backyard, but it must go back to the old railroad.
Uh,
again, I, I didn't include that because I'm comparing the townhouse developments uh like ours that have been put in in the last 10 years. And uh.
No, I understand that you looked, you, you told us about the townhouses all over Newburyport, and you compared yourself to those, but you know, if we think about the neighborhood that you're in, because at the end of the day, that's kind of what we have to do here. Um, I think this table becomes very useful, so I appreciate you addressing it for me. Um, I, I'm not sure I completely, completely follow how, how the two, two tables can result in such completely different answers, though. So.
No, I can't, uh, I can't either. And they're, they're dissimilar properties.
Well, if you, Caitlin, if you could go back to slide 38 in their presentation, because this doesn't have the data on it, but you can see visually the uh the size of the building is relative to the lots.
Right.
Um, it just does look like yours with the four units, your pink space there has, covers a lot more of the lots than your neighbors, any of them, any of the ones you've pointed to.
We're down at 172, we're very similar to 172.
I, I agree. I, I agree you're similar to that one. And to me, that is the one that is by far the densest in the neighborhood, and I'm not sure, you know, because you found one of the lot that's really, really dense, that that becomes the yardstick. I mean, I can understand the concerns in the neighborhood. Uh, and they're very uniform tonight and at the last meeting. And that's why I wanted to give you a chance to talk to it. Um, so I had one other question on the density, which is uh, but, you know, but between all the slides from last time and this time, I, 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 if you compare just the footprint of what you showed us in December to the footprint of what you're showing us today, is it the same?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, but I, I wasn't 100% sure. Um, okay, that's the only questions I have at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Uh, Mr. Chen.
Yeah, I, I think I just had uh two quick questions, and it has to do with the, the height of the buildings. I was looking at one of the drawings, and it looked like the maximum, the highest ridge height was 29.8 feet. Is, is that correct?
Uh, 29.8, yes.
But, but the eve height, so the, if you will, the bottom of the roof is 19.6 feet? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and as I said.
So that, that's similar to a standard two-story home?
Yeah, it is. That's all we're using is two stories, except on the last unit.
Right. Yep. Uh, I've got no other questions, Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chen, and then Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, I, Mr. Clifford, I, um, would you be prepared to consider uh eliminating the asphalt and using concrete in the driveway there? Or some sort of other material?
Yeah, I would be open to that, to, to using concrete.
I, I find the slash of asphalt there in an otherwise very tasteful project seems to be jarring to me. Uh, and I appreciate your consideration there.
Uh, it's more a maintenance consideration than anything.
I, I understand that, but there are there are not only aesthetic but environmental and other reasons for not using asphalt, but uh.
Okay.
Uh, and can you comment a bit on the uh materials that will be used in the exterior of this, of the buildings, please?
Um, the exterior materials are geared toward uh maintenance-free. Um, we use a composite materials for our siding uh and our trim boards. Uh, they're not as susceptible to deterioration from, from water. And uh they're made from compressed, actually compressed ash materials. Uh, they seem to be holding up very well as we continue to use them. Uh, our windows are usually Marvin. Uh, with the supply chain issues we're having, sometimes we jump around. But they're always a high quality uh of window. And the roofing material will be architect- And the roofing material will be architectural grade roofing uh, and architectural design uh, shingles.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Can you just comment also on what the maintenance uh, obligations will be relative to this stormwater system, which strikes me as somewhat sophisticated?
Well, um, that, that's a good point. We just finished one up at Hamilton Way. And there's a company in Billrica that comes once a year to service the system, to inspect it, to if it needs to be cleaned out. Uh, and that would be the homeowner, that would be part of the common fee would be this company's uh, charge on an annual basis. And they're on call also, if anything goes wrong. Uh, that's how the maintenance would be handled.
Right. Do you have an order of magnitude of what the annual maintenance might be? Okay. And finally, on, on the structure in the back, which appears to be somewhat taller than the others. I, I, I'm not quite sure why, why that has to be that way. Can you uh, talk to me about that a bit?
Uh, there is no difference.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
Wait a minute, no, I'm, I'm talking, I'm checking with my son.
Width of the buildings different, changes the peak.
Okay, the, the pitch changes because of the width. It's, it's about a foot higher at the ridge. Answered your question, that last unit.
All right. And just tell me again, how, how large, what are the, the living areas of, of these uh, units?
Uh, two thousand five hundred square feet.
And that's six, plus the two car garages.
That's correct.
Those are very generous units for sure. Quite nice, I, I must say that. Well, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions before I close that portion of the public here? Um, seeing no further questions from the board, we'll move into deliberations. And again, members of the VBA, I'll just remind us all that um, it looks as though in, in migration of this application from the first time we had heard it in December, uh, there appears to have been the removal of the applicant's request for a variance. Now, uh, the applicant seeks only the special permit uh, for non-conformities, uh, so the dimensional variance is no longer part of this application, but rather a special permit for non-conformities and a special permit for a use change. Uh, so with that, I ask you to uh, tailor your deliberations accordingly. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Chen Petty. When I was, I was very heartened by the, the changes uh, that were made from the last meeting with respect to trying to, trying to add some privacy. To the property and the willingness to um, continue to work with the Butters to do everything it can to improve, um, you know, the concerning sightlines that some Butters might have. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about you know, drainage and, and concerns about drainage, which seemed to have been addressed and would be worked into, you know, by the already agreed upon uh, conditions in here. Um, so from, you know, from the changes, we're, we're no longer looking for a variance for the first special permit for non-conformities. You know, I, I, you can see that there's improvement to many, uh, elimination of some improvement to many, so um, I, I appreciate that. Um, it satisfies that. And as far as being more detrimental to the neighborhood, with due respect to the Butters and, and the concern about the density, I am I am not as concerned about the density, I guess, and I'll listen to my colleagues on that. It's a large, it's a large lot. There are um, buffer zones on either side of the property line from, you know, from what I can, what I gather from the plans and what I gather from looking at the, at the area view. So um, I don't see it uh, with the developments in the general neighborhood. Um, I don't see this proposal being um, more detrimental to the neighborhood with respect to size and massing. Um, with all due respect to the concerns about the massing from the director Butters, uh, but I think the, the willingness to work with privacy issues and and the improvement on on the all right, on the uh, space between the, the property lines, I, I think um, I can live with that portion and, and find it not more detrimental, not um, more detrimental to the neighborhood in that respect. With respect to the multifamily use, I think that was laid out very well by the applicant that it's, it's located in the to be one zoning district where it's allowed by special permit. Um, it's multifamily is allowed by special permit and therefore by its very nature, the city finds that desirable. And it is maybe not within a half mile of the MBTA, but it is close to the MBTA, uh, which is which is helpful, especially in the, in overall arching plan of the city. Um, requested use won't create undue traffic congestion, as, as is expected to have as presented. Um, negligible impacts on traffic with the driveway entrance off State Street. Uh, it won't overload the public water drained sewer systems and will be uh, conditioned as such to make sure that um, that, that before any permits are granted for uh, re occupancy and building, that, that will all be approved um, by the proper city departments. Special regulations for you set forth in the permit are fulfilled. There are no special regulations here for multifamily use. The requested use won't impair the integrity or character. Um, it's not going to impair the character of, of this district or adjoining districts nor be detrimental or health and welfare as there is a mix of uses in this area already. Uh, the proposed new use will not cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. Proposed uses consistent with the purposes and intent of the Newburyport zoning ordinance. Um, multifamily use is allowed by special permit here in B one district. And as demonstrated in the application for special permit, the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner so as to admit any dangerous, noxious, injurious or otherwise. So um, that being said, again, with due respect to the the Butters' concerns about density, I um, I don't find this to be um, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as presented, so I believe I can support it. And that's where I am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, I, I uh, concur with some of what my colleague said with regard to multifamily. I have no issue with this becoming multifamily. Most of the neighborhood is multifamily. Um, I have no issue with that. If it was two units, it would fit within the, the acreage requirement and that would solve most of the rest of the problem. My issue is with the density, um, you know, we have to find, says the board must also find the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming user structure. When making this finding, the board may consider factors such as size, scale, massing, volume, location of the proposed structure, extension or alteration as compared to the existing structure and lot, the other structure and lots in the neighborhood and reasonable alternatives to the proposal. So if I look at that criteria that we're supposed to judge this by, yeah, relative to the existing building, yes, it's great. But relative to the other structures and lots in the neighborhood, that's where I have a problem. I, I think when I hear all the neighbors saying, you know, we're okay with this, it's just too dense. And I read that sentence and look at what we're supposed to be deciding here. Um, it just strikes me as, as not fitting that requirement. Uh, when you're proposing something that's more dense than your neighbors. Uh, you know, we've looked at other proposals even tonight, uh, where people were proposing things that were less dense than the neighbors, but this one's actually more dense. Um, and by the way, I appreciate you showing us those, those pictures of all the other projects you've done in town. You've clearly done a lot of beautiful projects over the years. But most of them weren't very dense. And I, and when you come to a multifamily like this to make it denser than the neighbors, that's where I have a problem, particularly when they're so, you know, it's hard to come out to a meeting and stay here till eleven o'clock and then come back the following month. But they did. Um, and I, I, I think they bring up a good point and I like the the area calculations that they did and the acreage calculations they did, and I think they're compelling. And I, I, I don't have any problem with the multifamily, but I have a problem with the, the overall massing here. Um, density is the wrong word. The bylaw says, the ordinance says massing, and it's the mass that I have a concern with. And so I can't support it uh, in its current state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Uh, Mr. Chen.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I agree with the uh, the multifamily use. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's a good, it's a great change to, I think the project's in the right direction. I, I struggle with, uh, again, the fact that some of the neighbors have a problem with the uh, density. I, I, I however, I, I guess I have to say for uh, for myself in driving in that neighborhood, uh, I'm, I'm often up and down State Street in that area. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't think four two-story units uh, in a cluster, you know, a condo or a, to me will be uh, will be that much more dense than what I've seen there. It'll be denser than some. I think it'll be similar to others. Um, there, there are a number of units, uh, you know, similar to that on, on State Street. Some are set back from the road quite a bit. Um, I, I think the style and uh, the homes as presented are done tastefully. I like the screening. I like the changing, the changes that the uh, the applicant has made after listening to uh, to some of the Butters. Um, and, and as I said, I'm not struggling with the uh, the size and the scale. I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that knocking this down to three units would change it all that much in my mind. So uh, with that said, I, I, I can support the proposal as submitted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chen and then Mr. Bennet.
I, I guess I come out uh, on this one with uh, my colleagues, Mr. Moore, Mr. Shagnan. Uh, first, uh, the, I, I am a, a big fan of this adaptive reuse here. I think it is uh, a very tastefully done. Uh, the streetscape uh, is a massive improvement. Uh, I applaud the developer and the applicant for reaching out to the uh, to the neighbors to attempt to address their legitimate concerns. Uh, and I understand the massing and scale issue. However, I, uh, as I um, drove through and actually took a little walk around there, I, I struck me, uh, at least my observation that I did not, I, I could not conclude that this project would be substantially uh, more detrimental to the uh, to the neighborhood. Uh, so I too uh, can support this project.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, I have to say, you know, I um, my concerns are a little twofold. Uh, I, I certainly appreciate the um, the uh, concerns of the Butters uh, deeply. And I think that they're legitimate and I think that the applicant has taken some steps to address them. Um, I, I'm, I too am moved and familiar with uh, the good work of this applicant uh, in the past and familiar with it. So I, I, I take on faith that this when finished will be as um, as thoughtfully and, and uh, carefully done as those projects are. But when I look at the criteria, I can say this just out of the gate, if this were still a variance, um, I, I don't think the applicant would be able to show the hardship necessary for this board to find favorably. And I think my colleagues may well agree with me on that. In that, uh, based on the review, the second pass by our zoning codes administrator, uh, along with, uh, I think prompted by Attorney Sheehan, um, it seems appropriate and fair and, and correct that that variance that was originally applied for, that we originally sort of used as our lens was um, was um, inappropriate for this application. It wasn't needed. Uh, and so therefore, uh, I can no longer look at this through that variance lens, which is a very high standard. What we're left with is our two special permits, one for non-conformities and one for a use change. And so the burden being far lower, uh, I have to kind of downshift a bit and think um, just in balance in terms of whether technically this, in my opinion, is, is substantially more detrimental than existing conditions and the pre-existing non-conformity, uh, but also taking into factors, taking the in, into consideration the factor of the other um, structures and the neighborhood as a whole. Um, is it perhaps more detrimental, you know, maybe with respect to certain uh, Butters' views and privacy? I think we've heard very clearly from those Butters that it is um, more detrimental. And I take that, um, I take that seriously. Um, as I think about drainage, we also heard some technical detail um, uh, from at least one uh, member of the public who offered uh, some technical thoughts with respect to stormwater management and uh, and that criteria. Fortunately, the city has a city engineer and I think any, any motion to approve would, would certainly need to bear that condition um, that uh, the applicant um, needs to submit to the city engineer, um, grading, design, parking, walkways, driveway, um, all of that geotechnical consistent with the Newburyport stormwater management ordinance prior to the issuance of any permit. So setting that aside, you know, my, my feeling is that uh, you know, I, I feel that uh, I can support this application provided that I felt as though the applicant were willing to take a second run at some of these privacy and screening issues because you know, it is a self-contained um, cluster of four units. I, I, I agree with my colleagues who have mentioned, and I believe it was Mr. Bennet, uh, but perhaps it was Mr. Chen who had said that whether it was four or three, since it's self-contained on that lot, it, it, it might not likely make too much of a difference for, 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 for them. Um, I'm not sure I disagree with that as you drive down State Street, but I, I give great respect and courtesy to the Butters from whom we've heard on two separate occasions. So um, I would ask whether um, whether Mr. Clifford or Mr. Attorney Sheehan, uh, i- if this board would have moved this to a, a, a motion uh, and, and take this vote next, uh, would the applicant be, be amenable to addressing the screening concerns along the, the sidelines of this to, to further try to um, improve the privacy impacts, the screening impacts and, and those impacts that I believe we've heard. And I, I, I hate to kind of color outside of the lines, but I, I feel compelled to ask you that question before we um, we move through deliberations and move to a vote.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I uh, as I think I indicated in my presentation, I'm very willing to work with the Butters on the privacy issue. Uh, I've already agreed to partake in a new fence uh, between one fifty-two and my property. Uh, that fence can be any height really, if, if agreed between the two parties. And even sections of it can be higher if necessary. Also, the sighting of, of the, the plantings, I would do that in concert with where they feel they would like the placement to be. And I think this works well for both sides. It's, it's privacy two ways. So I'm very amenable to working with the Butters on the privacy issue.
If um, I, if I might, I, you know, I, I would, I think the issue uh, probably came down to green screening versus hardscape screening. Um, I'm sure no one's interested in staring into a fence any more than they're interested staring into a window, but um, I, I would think that if, if Mr. Clifford and I, I certainly, you know, want to defer to, to your counsel. If I'm hearing a representation that, that um, all effort and earnest uh, effort will be undertaken to address those concerns, um, I, you know, I think while certainly not perfect, I, I feel better about, about the application. I just want to make sure um, I, I've heard uh, from both of you on that. I think it was one fifty-two and one sixty-two in particular. Uh, but I, I don't want to limit it to that because I don't know if others have similar concerns. That, that sideline is, is I think where we heard that general concern of privacy and, and screen.
Sure, I, I'm definitely amenable to uh, and I agree with you, the softer uh, greenscape is, is uh, aesthetically uh, better. But some people do prefer uh, fencing. Um, I'm open either way. I think I'm, at the very least, a mixture of both, not a straight line of fence, but something that uh, includes both would be a starting point and maybe toward uh, all green, fine with me.
Okay, um, so you would be amenable to along uh, the um, the sidelines, uh, or even the uh, the back a mix of hardscape and greenscape to uh, further a mix of hardscape and greenscape to uh further mitigate the uh, the privacy and uh screening impacts are something you'd be amenable to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I very appreciate that, uh, Mr. Clifford and Attorney Sheehan. Um, so I, you know,
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Of, of you and of the applicant. Um, great with the agreement to work with the greenscape around, and you kind of last touched on, on the rear, but I think that th- there was a, a major concern about unit number four, so um, maybe that requires, being said, specifically, not just, uh, you know, especially with the concerns about the height of, of unit four, maybe that needs an evergreen tree back there that won't lose leaves in the winter or something like to that, to that effect. I don't know if we can get that specific, but I want to have that conversation.
We can. I, I would, I would leave it to my uh, to, to the good work of my colleagues uh on the board to, to craft a, a motion that, that envelops as much detail as I think we discussed. I, I, I would defer to um to each and every one of the ZBA to, to just simply put in as much detail as you feel is appropriate. I, I, I think that it should be conditioned, any motion, at least this is just my share. Um, I believe that um we would want to uh condition it upon the applicant submitting to the city engineer the grading plan. Uh, that's mostly a stormwater, uh, new report stormwater management ordinance compliance component that uh, that were well-served to, to address. So um, was there anything else, Mr. Moore? I didn't want to cut you off.
I'm ju- and how, I'm trying to how the can, so if, if the applicant wants to abide, and I know, shouldn't say that the applicant wants to abide by this condition and comes up with a screening plan. What's the mechanism for uh the go-forward, I guess, on the screening plan? Who is, who, who looks over that and says, yo, that, that works?
Well, the, the zoning enforcement officer, uh, Jennifer is very uh, well, she was fastidious about the landscape plan that we had at Hamilton Way. And coming up and checking each and every plant that was on that landscape plan. If, if I could uh, if I could, yes, if I could interrupt for just a moment, Mr. Clifford.
The uh, we have Ms. Lanchay uh on uh, on the meeting. I, I guess we can just ask, Jennifer, can you hear us?
Uh, Chair Chantetti, this is Andrew Port, the Director of the Department. Uh, can you hear me?
We can. Thanks, Andy.
Okay, uh, if I could address that actually, because I think it's actually um, a, a question of whether or not that's appropriate for the zoning administrator's role. Um, to be clear, it actually would be more appropriate for uh, maybe to Mark Moore's point, uh, the plan should very clearly s- uh state with conditions that are um coherent, or the plan should show the specific plantings prior to approval and is incorporated into that vote. Um, that would uh not be a clear enough instruction, I think, for the zoning administrator to determine um, you know, what's appropriate, trying to balance those interests between the butter and the applicant. So um, I think it would be more appropriate for the board to make that determination and then provide that provision or that condition for the zoning administrator to uh enforce uh accordingly. Um, like with that, I would defer to Jennifer, but that's generally um how things work mechanically. Her role is to make sure that people follow the right process and the ordinances and decisions are enforced, rather than to necessarily decide the policy-level questions about uh appropriate screening.
Um, okay, well, then, then what you're suggesting, um, Mr. Port, is that we wait for a revised plan if, if I'm here, am I hearing that correctly? Because I, you know, I'm reticent to wanna, I'm reticent to want to drag anyone, if the applicant or members of the public that have spent their time this evening to come back yet again um on a landscaping plan, but if that's, if that's the proper way to ensure those metrics are addressed in an enforceable way, uh, in a uh, you know, in a, in a, in a credible way, then then, then I'm amenable to it.
Uh, yeah, sure. So it's just uh, you know, again, if their condition is very clearly worded, for instance, where something is going to go, the length of it, you know, the location, um, that could be done, but it, it, my experience has shown that trying to do that on the fly um for something like this, at least as far as the description has gone this far in deliberations, would be hard to condition in a way I think that the zoning administrator could clearly enforce uh without there being to potential debate between the applicant and abutters as to what was reasonable or consistent with the board's vote.
Uh, may I just, may I comment?
Yes, please, Mr. Bennet, and thank you, Mr. Port.
Thank you, Andy. I, I, I'm just thinking and to follow up on your, on your points, uh, Rob. It would seem to me that perhaps an approach here would be an approval subject to uh approval of the final uh, 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 final uh plan, uh, screening plan by the zoning board. I mean, I think, I, I think if I heard you correctly, Mr. Chair, and I, I tend to agree that we view that as part and parcel of the, of the approval here and not just an administrative finding. But uh, I'll, I'll leave that up to you.
I, I agree, and look, as much as I'm trying to, you know, to shout into the wind on this, um, I, 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 I'm very sensitive to, to not want to forestall or belabor. You know, it's already been a very um thoughtful and uh, and tedious necessarily so process um for the public and for the applicant. Uh, I think what we need to do, if we're to do this well and do this work credibly, is we're in for a penny, in for a pound here. Uh, I think that um, and co- and members of the ZBA, tell me if you agree with me. I, I'm inclined to, and I hate to have to ask to do it, uh, Mr. Clifford, but I, I'd, I'd like to see this um in a little more granular presentation on the plan so that we as a board can with more confidence and credibility from a follow-on standpoint of enforcement, et cetera, um, approve something that exists uh on a plan. Would, uh, let me ask um of my colleagues, what are your thoughts on that? Because then I'll pose this to Mr. Clifford, and then I think we should move uh, move this along uh one direction or the other um to try to get things uh advanced forward.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was my point, is that we, it's all fine and good to say, okay, we're going to work together to screen, but without knowing what that means and without having that written down and agreed to in some form by us and by the by the applicant in, in concert with, and present it to uh the public. I, I think it's hard to, to expect to say, yeah, go ahead and, and we'll be good, although I sure the developer has, I mean, our applicant has, has great intentions. I just think we need to do it that way. And also that means a conditional okay with the project now, subject to coming back into a business meeting to get final approval on, on screening, or if it's a, if it's, you know, we just um continue the whole thing until we just see that part of it. It won't be a full-blown presentation.
I don't think it's practical to, to bifurcate this, uh, as much as I would love to say that we could. I, I don't, I think it's effective to simply um, to have it all uh in order. But, uh, Mr. Swanton, um, did you have any comments? And I, I just want to make sure I do one quick pass of our, of our membership before we um, we, we try to move it along.
I make a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't have any comments on this, no.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Hey, uh, if, if slide 28 could be put up, please. Okay, this is the landscape plan as it currently exists and as pictured in I various shots that I showed. Uh, it defines the type of trees on the left, where they go, and in addition, it has every large tree that exists and has been sighted by uh my engineer around the perimeter. So the combination of that, you know, that's, that's a, a pretty, a pretty good landscape plan, and it's based on where the view encroachments might be, privacy, et cetera. As you can see, the upper left here to 162 is very dense, and that's for that purpose. The same with the corner in back because of her deck. We, we've worked through the, the, the locations that have the specific problems. And all I'm saying is that this, this plan largely accomplishes what we want to accomplish. And beyond this plan, I think I'd be willing to state that I would be happy to add additional screening uh as agreed between the neighbors and myself, but here you are with three quarters of it. In addition to the mature trees that are already there, and as we saw in one of the very first slides, they had a photograph of that sideline, very dense existing trees.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Um, Mr. Chen, uh, do you uh have any thoughts on on this?
I guess, al- although I think it's a noble goal to try and uh nail this down, I, I'm not sure we're, we're being a disservice to the applicant into the process. I mean, this could go another two weeks to a month if it has to be a mutually agreeable screening plan between the applicant and the abutters.
Okay.
I, I'd, I'd rather just to state that uh the existing plan is sufficient and that the uh, the applicant is willing to come up with additional mutually agreeable screening uh after meeting with the uh, with the abutters so that we could, we could say yea or nay of this, to this tonight.
Okay, um, I appreciate that, Mr. Shannon. Uh, Mr. Bennet.
Well, I, yeah, I think Mr. Shannon, Shannon's on to something there. I mean, my, my thought was that uh w- we could, we, that we would be the final arbiter. It wouldn't be a mutually agreeable plan, and uh if there's more room here to negotiate and to discuss, then they can do it in two weeks and come back, and uh Mr. Clifford can say, this is what I want to do. The other side can say, this is what we want to do. And ultimately, we'll decide if it's adequate or not, but uh, a- as the applicant said, this is three quarters of the way there, so maybe we're dancing on the head of a pin here. I'm not quite sure. I'm going to leave it to your good judgment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chantetti?
Yes, Attorney Sheehan.
It, it, I, I appreciate all of these considerations. The only thing I'm going to ask you to, to consider is not to condition anything on a mutually agreeable anything, because that's a condition that really can't be satisfied objectively. Uh, so just with that one caveat, but we're certainly willing to uh, to accept a condition regarding additional landscaping. And I don't mean to tell you by any means your business. You've been through this many, many times. Just, I just wanted to uh sound that caveat.
I uh, I fully agree with that. That's um, you know, that's, that's a splitting and, and an unsplittable attitude. So uh, I appreciate that, Attorney Sheehan. Uh, okay, with that, I, I think that we've deliberated fairly. Um, and uh, I would just leave with my colleagues before emotion, before we close this and the motions made that uh perhaps we uh, we, if we're to make a motion, if, if we're to entertain a motion to approve with conditions that uh regarding landscaping, among other things like the drainage plan, the city, the applicant to work with the city engineer, that with respect to landscaping, um, that we just asked that the uh applicant endeavor to work uh to improve the screening and to um just submit that um, that plan uh to uh, to the planning department uh once that's accomplished, and we'll have the opportunity to see that. I think that's the most we can hope for, and, and we have to rely upon the uh, the good faith and credit of of uh, Mr. Clifford and his attorney's representation to us this evening, that that is something they will undertake um in earnest. So uh, I, I suppose that uh, that gives me greater comfort. So uh, with that, I, I have no further deliberations for me. Uh, and if there's nothing else from the members of the ZBA, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we will uh entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that um uh, we approve the special permit for non-conformities for the application on 156 State Street, ZNC 21 dash four, with the condition that the applicant shall submit to the city engineer a grading design for parking, walkways and driveway for approval, consistent with the new report stormwater management ordinance prior to the issuance of building permit. And additionally, agrees to address additional screening concerns as they arise.
Okay, um, do we have a second?
Second that, now, Mr. Shagman.
Okay, and Ms. Joy, did you um, were you able to capture all of that um on the motion? I just want to make sure there, there was quite a bit there.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Great. I, I have no doubt. You always do. Thank you. Um, okay, uh, motion is uh made by Mr. Moore and seconded by, was it Mr. Shannon? My colleague. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Calling the roll, uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Swanton?
No.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And uh, Rob Chantetti, I vote uh yes with those conditions. Um, the um, that is four in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries, and with those conditions, the application uh is approved, and we'll uh just look for a submission of a uh additional screening landscape plan uh from Mr. Clifford um, uh to be submitted to the planning office. Uh, thank you all.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
We have the other use to do.
Yeah, we're going to do the multifamily.
Uh, of course, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Someone can run with that one.
Um, and uh, we have, thank you for reminding me, we have a second um special permit for a use change, that multifamily use 103. Uh, and uh, do we have a motion for that special permit?
Mr. Shagman, I'll make a uh a motion to approve the application ZSP 21 dash one to allow multifamily use, use number 103.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shannon, and this, and uh, do we have a second?
Do we also need to have conditions on that as well?
Um, the same conditions would apply uh the um, uh, on this, and we can simply incorporate by reference the conditions on the first special permit for non-conformity. So simply just having Ms. Joy record it uh as a um, uh, you know, a motion with uh in, in incorporating by reference this, the uh, the um conditions um from the first motion is fine.
And that having been noted, I second.
Okay, so uh, Mr. Shannon, was that your motion, sir?
It was.
All right, and uh seconded by Mr. Moore. Calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Shannon? Uh, Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And uh, Rob Chantetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries, and the special permit for use change 103 uh is approved. And uh, again, uh, thank you, Attorney Sheehan and Mr. Clifford, and uh we'll look for that uh follow-on additional screening work uh and uh members of the public who have taken the time for the second evening um to uh, to toil with us until late in the evening. Thank you for your patience and for your uh thoughtful comments uh as part of this process. Um, moving on now to our-
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Um, moving on now to uh the next application. This is the applicant, this is an application uh of Kevin and Nancy Dunn, care of Lisa Mead, Mead, Talerman and Costa LLC. The property address is 3O Street. Uh, this is an application uh docket 21 dash 10. A um, uh, special permit for non-conformities to construct an addition uh onto a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a conforming lot. Attorney.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I um, with all due respect, my agenda says the Ansec application is next, 161 Water Street. Do we change that around?
Oh, we did, uh, we did not. I think I just mistakenly read the um, the 3O Street, so with uh, with my pardon, let's um, I'll reread that public notice and my apologies. Um, this is the application for a special permit for non-conformities, docket 21 12 of David and Patrick Ansec, care of Lisa Mead, Mead, Talerman and Costa LLC, for the property address of 161 Water Street. The applicant seeks unnecessary approvals to construct a second story over a recently approved addition with a one-story rear addition, Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and uh members of the board. Um, Lisa Mead, Mead, Talerman, Costa, 30 Green Street, a new report, and with me this evening is Scott Brown, as well as David and Patrice Ansec, who are the owners of 161 Water Street. You can go to the first slide, please. Um, the Ansex are here to request a special permit for a proposed second floor addition on top of the first floor addition that this board actually approved um earlier last summer. Uh, you might recall that we received a special permit for the Ansex on June 22nd to add a one-story addition off the rear of the structure. In obtaining the bids uh and undertaking that process to understand how um the cost of construction relative to the square footage on what was being added and what the needs for a square footage was, the Ansex decided that it would be um beneficial to them both financially as well as practically um to add a second floor at this time when they were doing the construction on the rear of the structure, and that what is what drove um them for asking for the second floor. So the property is located in the WMD zoning district and the DCOD. Uh, the property is approved at the single-family residence um on which the petitioner already proposes to construct that first story. Um, it is listed as contributory in the historic district data sheets um and uh was built around 1875. There is no Form B for the property. The property is pre-existing non-conforming as we show on the site plan, but uh it is in the WMD district, which requires a minimum lot size- But it is in the WMD district, which requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The property has 4,026, minimum required frontage of 90. The property has 36.28. Side setback requirement of 10 and the front and rear setback of 25, where the property has a five-foot west side setback and a 3.5-foot front yard setback. The structure is 26 feet in height, where the district allows for 25. If you can go to the next slide, please. So as I said, we're constructing, proposing to construct a, a second story addition over the one-story addition you already approved. There's no change to the building footprint, and this constitutes an upward extension of that west side setback. The second story addition removes a slightly larger portion of the rear wall in addition to the prior proposed addition, but still does not trigger the DCOD special permit. If you go to the next slide, please. So you might recall, this is at the, this project is at the base of Salem and Franklin Street, right next to the sewer treatment plant. The house most immediately adjacent to the sewer treatment plant was just redone, and this is the second house. And the rear, which you will see shortly, is the, in fact, it is the sewer treatment plant. So the house on the right here is the subject house. The addition on the back is the addition footprint that was approved before and for which we are seeking a special permit to go on to a second floor. Next slide, please. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Brown, who is the architect on the project.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Mead. If we could just go back to the previous slide, please. And just to, just to piggyback on, you know, something that Attorney Mead had already mentioned. You know, the impetus for this change to the plans has, has everything to do with, with construction costs. And the fact that they've escalated to a point where, where I guess a lot of my clients are really sort of questioning value. And in this instance, and then in this instance, the Ansecs realized that, you know, they were paying an extraordinary premium for this, for the one-story addition that we previously came to you with. So why not add a second story for less than half the cost? And at the same time, give the house some, some added significant value. So this plan before you tonight gives the house a third, albeit very small bedroom at the second floor and a true primary bedroom. The house ends up being, with these plans before you tonight, ends up being kind of a modest 1,700-square-foot house, which is about 1,000 square feet less than the house immediately next door to it, which recently had an addition on the, put on the back of that house and, and is currently on the market. So in this plan, really nothing has changed here. The footprint is identical to the previous application, which we received approval for. The only thing that is different on this site plan is the deck configuration in the back. And this second opportunity has really given us a chance to think a little bit more carefully about how the parts come together. So this new deck configuration is really about the parts coming together in a cleaner way. Next slide, please. So these are the existing, existing elevations, same thing that you saw last June. Next slide, please. So these are our proposed elevations. The first floor design of this and the window fenestration is identical to what we had before. As I already mentioned, the, the deck configuration in back is different, as shown here. Again, you know, we've set the addition back from the size of the existing house. So there's a clear distinction between old and new. And with the second story, we've worked very hard to keep the height of the addition lower than the existing house. Again, this is trying to make the addition subservient to the original box. And given the low ceiling heights of the existing second floor, I think that we are at our limit in terms of how low we can make this and still have some functionality inside. Lastly, we are still planning on a high-quality, premium-grade project. The siding will be all wood clambered to match the existing house. Windows, of course, will be clad wood windows with simulated divided lights. And we'll be using rot-resistant trim, which holds paint really well and stays looking great for a long period of time. Next slide, please. So this is the overview. Subject properties highlighted there. The property to the immediate left is what I, you know, the, the property that I previously mentioned. This slide is a little, this area view is a little outdated. The property to the left has a larger addition on the back of it. Next slide, please. The street view looking down Water Street towards Plum Island. Property immediately to the left is that one that I spoke about that's being renovated. The next house is the subject property. Next slide, please. Looking down the left slide, this is a little deceptive because of the angle. But we're really not going to see much of the addition in this angle. And to give you an idea of scale and depth, the extent of our deck, our, our deck stops a little bit short of that, you know, existing shed that we're seeing in the back left corner. Next slide, please. Looking down the right side, we're really, from this angle, really not going to see any of the addition. The only thing that we're going to see is our, our stairs to our new deck and back. And finally, next slide. And just as we're going back, that, back down the street, looking towards the center of the report. How, you know, house that we're talking about is the, the blue one in front of us. And with that, next slide, I'll hand it back to Attorney Mead. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So under section 9B, the applicant needs to show that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity. And indeed, there will be no new nonconformities. We're intensifying the west side setback in upward motion. And then whether or not the petitioner can show that the proposed modification is substantially, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure use. Here, Scott's proposed addition remains subservient to the existing historic structure. It will be built upon the first floor, which you previously approved, and will be shorter in height than the existing structure and more narrow in width than the existing structure. It will be minimally visible from Water Street, otherwise is the pub, as to the public view, and it will not be obtrusive. Further, the backyard of the petitioner abuts the new report wastewater treatment plant. And respectfully to the plant, the addition will have no impact thereon. And the, even with the second floor addition, the house remains modest in size. The square footage of this, the second floor is 315 square feet. And the historic architecture stays intact. Based upon that, the applicant requests the board grant a special permit for nonconformities for 161 Water Street for the second floor addition on the back.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. Closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll go to public comment. And seeing no hands raised at the moment, let me just double check. Going once, going twice, seeing still no hands, I will close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go to questions. Beginning with Mr. Moore.
Shockingly, I have no questions right now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. We'll go to, I believe, Mr. Delisle, you are voting on this application. So you are, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just one question, and I think it can be fielded by either Attorney Mead or, or Mr. Brown. With regard to the DCOD and the 25%. In the, the application that was granted in June, you made the representation that whatever was happening in June wouldn't trip the DCOD. And you're making the same representation tonight. So in the aggregate, do the two trip the DCOD or in the aggregate, you're still fine?
In the, thank you, Mr. Delisle. In the aggregate, we're still fine. Given the dates of the applications under the DCOD, we have to aggregate them together. So them together do not trip the DCOD.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all for me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, this is a very straightforward proposals. I appreciate it being subservient. Your materials are very clear. I have no questions.
Very good. Mr. Shannon?
Just one quick question for Attorney Mead. So the proposal is to put on a second floor over the existing first floor. And I think you said it was a little over 300 square feet for the second floor. Was the first floor the same square footage?
Yes, 315 square feet each.
315, so the total addition now is 630.
I believe that is correct. And I think that's actually on the, I think we actually show that on a site plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon, and I have no further questions either. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations. And because we're deliberating a special permit for nonconformities, we'll just try to govern. Please try to govern your deliberations around the criteria for a special permit for nonconformities, starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chimpety. Very straightforward project and plan. And as presented, we can see that there's, again, no new nonconformities being presented here. So our, our second finding has to be that this application, if approved, won't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than pre-existing. And as colleagues have said, being subservient and, and modest in nature, I don't see any concerns with size, scale, massing compared to anyone in the neighborhood, so I can support this.
Sorry about that. I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I concur with Mr. Moore. I think that his analysis is correct, and as a result, I can support this application also.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
I too concur with the two of them, and I can support it.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Shannon.
Also agree. I can support the application. Thank you.
And we don't mean to cut you out, Mr. Bennet. You're part of the deliberations, though just simply not voting, but still part of the deliberations. And so your thoughts?
I will concur with my colleagues here.
Thank you. I, I do as well. I think it's a straightforward application, and I appreciate that. So we'll close that portion of the public hearing and move to a motion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for special permit for nonconformity for 161 Water Street, which is ZNC-21-12.
Second.
All right, motions made by Mr. Moore and seconded by, I believe, a, a partnership of Mr. Swanton and Mr. Delisle.
Why don't you take it, Mr. Delisle?
All right, Mr. Delisle. Calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Shannon? And Rob Chimpety, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries. And the special permit for nonconformities is approved on 161 Water Street. Thank you, Attorney Mead, and thank you, Scott Brown.
Thank you very much.
Moving to the next application, this is the application by Kevin and Nancy Dunn care of Lisa Mead, Mead, Tellerman and Costa LLC for the property address of 3O Street. This is a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits to construct an addition onto a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a conforming lot, Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Lisa Mead, Mead, Tellerman, Costa, 30 Green Street. On behalf of Kevin and Nancy Dunn, and with me this evening, in addition to them, are Scott Brown, who's the architect on the project. As the chair said, this is a project at 3O Street. And you can go to the first slide, please. The applicant proposes, the applicants propose to renovate their existing home and enclose a deck area and change the architectural style of the home from a flat roof, very modern-looking design to a pitched roof. The property is in the R3 and AdCon zoning district and the Piad overlay district. The entirety of the structure is within the R3 portion of that district on the lot. And therefore, the Plum Island overlay district dimensions apply. There's currently a single-family, three-bedroom home on the property. The only nonconformity is the front yard setback, which is at 18.3, where 20 feet is required. The home was built around 1974, prior to the adoption of the Piad. Next slide, please. So as I said, the applicant's proposing to change the style of the home from a flat roof to a pitched roof in addition to enclosing some outer spaces that are existing decks. The plan has been reviewed extensively by the building department and the zoning code enforcement officer relative to the FAR calculation. The proposal is to add a second floor screened-in porch over an existing roof area, as well as infilling two areas within the existing confines of the footprint. There will be no new bedrooms added. The result will be a upward extension of the 18.3 front yard setback because of the pitched roof. And it will also increase the FAR from .15 to .17, still far short of the .25. The total addition is 497 square feet of living area. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to, well, why don't we go to the site plan? And if you could just blow that up a little bit, perhaps, Caitlin. So as you can see, O Street runs along the top of the, of the property here of the plan. And it's a very large lot on Plum Island. Otherwise, the house sits in the middle of the lot. You'll see the grade change, change to the left of the house there. But that's where the structure sits. That footprint will not be changing at all as part of this proposal. And with that, I'll change, turn it over to Scott to review the plans.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Can we just move forward to slide number seven, one of the existing photos of the house? Great, thank you. So the driving force behind this project is really about improving the aesthetics of the house and, and also improving the functionality of the interior somewhat. This house is situated on the highest point of this section of Plum Island. It is not in a flood zone. The bones of this house are in excellent shape. It was built in the 70s. It has a solid concrete foundation, which you can see in this photo here. And this, in my experience, is unusual on Plum Island. It is, however, not the most aesthetically pleasing house that I've ever worked on. And it is the Dunn's desire to, to upgrade this significantly. So this is a photo taken from the front right corner. The house is shaped like an H. We really weren't able to work with that configuration, meaning we weren't able to make it look nice. So one of the things that we are proposing to do is infill, is to infill the indentations of the H. And that section on the left side of the photo there, the indentation, we're proposing to sort of in, infill that. The house also has a flat roof, which we can clearly see in this photo. Next slide, please. So we're going around the house to the, around the right side of the house. There is a, an existing sort of ad hoc storage area that we're seeing right here that we're proposing to remove. Next slide. So this is the west elevation. This is the side of the house that faces downtown Newburyport. You can clearly see the flat roof here. At the second floor level, on the right side, that area, which is enclosed by that railing, that's a section of the house we're proposing to put a roof over that and make that a screen porch. Immediately to the left of that, that roof area there, we're going to be converting that to an outdoor sitting area. Next slide, please. This is the house taken from the abutting property. This is the southeast corner. You know, and this is the side of the house that we are proposing to put a solar array on the roof. And if we could go back to the proposed elevation, slide six. So here, upper left-hand corner, this is our front elevation of the house or easterly facing side. Immediately below that is the western side of the house, the side of the house that faces Newburyport immediately to that, to the right of that. Lower right-hand corner is the south elevation or left side. This is the side of the house we're proposing to put that solar array. And above that, that's the right side of the house or northerly elevation. So, you know, the plan here is to transform this house into, into something that is more traditionally styled with a higher level of detail. You know, for the most part, we're reskinning the entire building and infilling portions of the existing. You know, for the most part, we're, we're reskining the entire building and infilling portions of the existing structure in order to create this look. We are adding a higher level of detail and finishes, uh, in the addition of the Gable roof, uh, I think is a game changer from an architectural perspective. Uh, we are intending the exterior of this project be high, uh, to be a high-quality premium product. Uh, the siding will be cedar shakes. Well, we will be using high-quality aluminum clad windows and of course, uh, rot-resistant, uh, trim stock, which holds paint really well and and, uh, stays looking, uh, great for a long period of time and, uh, that is super important, uh, yeah, in a location that is, is as exposed, uh, as this. And, uh, finally, I think this is, um, uh, shaped up to be a really nice-looking project, in my opinion. And, uh, I certainly hope that the board agrees. Uh, and with that, I will, uh, turn it back over to Attorney Me. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Um, you can go down, yeah, thank you, Caitlin, you go down to that last slide. So, a- and in accordance with the, uh, criteria under the Pyod for a special permit to modify pre-existing nor- nonconforming, uh, structure, the board needs to find whether or not the proposed changes will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and/or to the Pyod. Here, at the, in the case at hand, the intensification of the existing nonconformity is a result of the change in the pitch of the roof and the addition of enclosing existing, uh, decks off the second floor, which intensifies the front yard, um, elevation, that's the O Street elevation. Overall, there is no change to the footprint of home. There's no addition of a bedroom. There exists three and there will continue to be three. While the FAR increases, it only increases by point two, uh, from seventeen, point seventeen to point nineteen and remains conforming. The increase, as I said earlier, is four hundred and ninety-seven square feet, all within the existing footprint and all of the other required dimensional require, uh, dimensional standards are met. Um, considering the current structure of the property, the proposed new structure cer- certainly not more sub- substantially more detrimental to either the neighborhood or the Pyod. Um, whereas, of course, as you know, substantially means to a great or significant extent. Um, specifically, um, the only new piles that will be driven are those to support a couple of the stairs that, um, that you saw on the proposed drawings. Um, we're also removing that, um, deck around the side that, um, that has the trellis on it. Um, and so that will be a benefit to the movement of the sand dune around the property. Um, so there will be no new solid structures added, um, to the sand dune area that would be a detriment to the dune system. With that, because we believe the project is entirely compliant with the dimensional requirements, but for that front yard setback, which will not be exacerbated, rather intensified in an upward extension, the board can find that this proposal is not substantially more detrimental to either the neighborhood or the Pyod and we request your approval of the application. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you, Attorney Me. Uh, if there's nothing further in presentation, we can, uh, go to close that portion of the public hearing and go to public comment, if there is any. Uh, and, um, I see Andy's put the slide up, uh, seeing the attendees, we're showing nine, there's no hands. Going once, going twice, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go right into questions, starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Chimpetti. Um, I just wanted to, uh, a brief explanation, explanation, he tries to say, um, of the new piles that will be driven and what existing piles are gonna remain, how is that gonna be reconfigured? As, as you said, um, Attorney Me, that it won't be disturbing the dunes, but I'd just like to see the, or hear a little better explanation of that.
Um, Scott, can you show perhaps the, that entry that's got the, the new support going?
Yeah, we could just turn to slide six, the, um, our existing elevations. So right there, the upper left-hand corner, uh, this is, these are, well, actually, sorry, I misspoke. Uh, these are proposed elevations. Next slide, please. There we go. So upper left-hand corner, this is our front elevation. So we're actually adding a deck and stairs. Um, and, uh, that front entry there, that, with that, you know, sort of pediment-shaped structure underneath those two columns, uh, that's where we will need to put, uh, two new, uh, piles as well as one, uh, all the way, uh, to the left there as well to support the end of that deck. Uh, for the most part, we think we can kind of work with, uh, the existing piles that are, uh, already supporting the back of the house, including that back rear deck.
Uh, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore, um, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just had one, I think, one quick question because Mr. Moore, uh, hit my second question. Um, is the FAR increasing to point one seven or to point one nine? Um, the
Oh, I see.
Mr. Brown's sheet A zero point one seems to indicate that it's increasing to point one nine. I don't know if that's part of the presentation.
It's, it's, excuse, yeah, I misspoke initially, I believe, it, Mr. Brown's sheets are correct. It's going to point one nine from point one seven. I apologize, I misspoke initially and in the end I said it correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Swanton.
Um, yeah, I mean, this is a big lot. If, if you had the house was set back two more feet, you wouldn't even be here. Um, I usually zero in on FAR because so many of these things, people are trying to make them awfully dense on this fragile environment, but you're way under the, as you say, you can form. Um, so I have no questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton and, um, Mr. Chen.
I've got no questions, Chair. Um, nice design. I was really surprised in looking at the drawings after seeing the house, uh, yeah, what a difference, same day, you wouldn't even know it was the same building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Um, Mr. Bennet.
No questions here.
I have no questions either. Uh, we can close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations around the criteria for a special permit for nonconformities, uh, and, uh, we'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Chimpetti. Um, as my colleagues have said, it's, uh, you know, beautiful update to a seventies-style home that, uh, that we've seen from time to time, so, um, the fact that, um, it's not introducing any new nonconformities. Um, you know, the FAR is increasing but still well within limits and, uh, the, the height with the Gable roof, um, is still within range. There are obviously no new nonconformities added. And then when you look at, uh, the metrics I just mentioned, from a, a standpoint of, um, of massing and size massing and, and anything being more detrimental to the neighborhood of the Pyod, I, I just don't see it. I think it's a really nice, uh, a nice change and a great update. And it also incorporates, uh, some solar, solar power, which is also nice, so. For that reason, uh, not necessarily the last reason, but, uh, for those reasons, I can support it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, Mr. Delisle.
Uh, again, I'm gonna concur with Mr. Moore. I think that, uh, the nice update to this house and, uh, I can support this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle and, uh, Mr. Swanton.
I concur as well.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chen.
Uh, another concurrence.
All right, and Mr. Bennet.
Uh, this is a positive improvement, so I could support it as well.
I, uh, thank you, Mr. Bennet, I agree. Um, I think it's a wonderful design, it's thoughtful, um, and, um, it is unrecognizable, but also, uh, I think is, I, I think it was Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, mentioned that if it were, uh, two feet further back, they wouldn't even be, uh, need to come before us. Um, you know, that's, that's a, uh, that's a reasonable uh, FAR, um, you know, sort of strikes on, um, on a fragile environment like Plum Island, so thank you for the, that, uh, that effort, um, Attorney Me and your clients and, and Scott. Um, any other further deliberations? If not, uh, I will close that portion of the public hearing and we will go to, um, motions. Do we have a motion to approve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Delisle, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the special permit for nonconformities for three O Street.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries and the application for a special permit, uh, is approved. Thank you, Attorney Me and, uh, thank you, Scott. Um, best of luck to, uh, to your clients and, uh, thank you for your patience this evening.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving now to our last public hearing, this is the application of set on, uh, of Patrick and Jessica Murray, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC for the, uh, property located at seventeen Turkey Hill Road. This is a special permit for nonconformities uh, to pro- a proposed renovation and upward extension of a nonconforming, single-family home. Attorney Me.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, Costa Thirty Green Street in Newport. And with me this evening are my clients, Patrick and Jessica Murray, along with Eileen Graff of Graff Architects, she's the architect on the project and my colleague Ben Taylor. Um, this application is for seventeen Turkey Hill Road. Uh, Patrick and Jessica proposed to renovate their home, including adding a story to it, which will result in an upward extension of the existing nonconformities. You can go to the first slide, please. Uh, the property is in the R one zoning district. It was constructed in nineteen seventy-nine and consistent with a number of homes constructed in that period. It is a split-level home, which would include a first floor and a basement level. Um, it is the corner lot with frontage on Turkey Hill and Henderson Circle and its primary front yard is the side abutting Henderson, Henderson Circle. The property has existing nonconformities for both the front yard setbacks and rear setbacks. The R one district requires a rear yard setback of thirty feet and the applicant has a rear yard of twenty-three point seven. I might add here, this house was built before we had the split front yard, so to speak. So the rear was the side kind of thing. The front yard is supposed to be thirty feet where the structure is set back twenty-nine point three from Turkey Hill and twenty-two point five from Henderson. All other aspects of the property and structure are in conformance with the ordinance. The Murray's proposed to add a thousand twenty-nine square feet of area to their home by doing an upward extension and adding a second floor over the first floor of the existing split-level home. You can go to the next slide, please. Uh, the proposed addition will intensify the rear and front yard setbacks, nonconformity by the upward extension. Uh, the addition, uh, there are no changes in the other existing nonconformities and to be clear, the footprint of the structure is not changing. If you could go to the next slide, please. So here we have a site plan. Uh, you can see Turkey Hill Road off here to the left, Henderson Circle down to the bottom. And you can see the house located facing Turkey Hill Road, which would have been the front yard when it was originally constructed. Now it's the secondary front yard. Um, and that is the, the way the house currently sits on the lot. You can see it's a good-sized lot with a deep backyard, which would have been the original backyard, which is now a side yard. Um, so with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Eileen and she will go over, um, the architectural drawings.
Thank you, Attorney Me. Um, if we could just slide to the next, um, piece, best slide, thank you. Um, so this is a existing house, um, as you can see, a split level. Uh, modest in, in square footage, um, with roughly a thousand per floor. Um, and the, and if we slide to the next slide, this is showing the proposal, so we are, as, as Attorney Me mentioned, we are not changing the footprint, we are simply, um, extruding the footprint up one more floor, um, and adding a thousand twenty-nine square feet. Um, our goal here, um, was to keep it while we have, with the split level, part of the some basement space is halfway out of the, uh, grade. We're trying to keep the, the form still at a smaller level by um, proposing a gambrel roof so that we are occupying that roof form with some of that living space, so this can be seen in the transition from the sixteen point one building height, um, a dimension to what's now proposed by adding a second story to twenty-two point one, so a modest, um, height increase again, because of, uh, occupying that, um, space beneath the roof form. Um, so we've, we've used the, uh, gambrel, uh, form, um, to create all this space. Um, on the rear, which is the bottom left, I wanted to just point out that we are going to maintain the existing um, deck and sunroom, um, on that rear and you can see it on the bottom right as well. Um, and, and just to keep that intact, um, as they use it quite often, in particular with, um, with the pandemic going on. Um, as far as materials, we're, we're, the, we see this as, uh, shingles for the siding. Um, we are looking at um, cedar shingles, the pre-dipped, but if cost concerns come in, it may shift to, to a vinyl product. The windows would be uh, proposed as vinyl as well and the roofing to be architectural shingles. Um, as you can see, the window uh, uh, styles have shifted from the, the one light to now with a, uh, more more attractive proportion of the cottage style with the six-over-one to help support the, um, gambrel type of, of form. There are, um, you will see in, in this neighborhood, um, a mixture of, of scale of, of properties. Um, in fact, the, the budding neighbor to the left has done something similar, um, with this second-story addition. Um, all through Turkey Hill, um, um, that's the street, you see a mix of two-story. Um, Henderson Circle for sure is a larger-scale, um, two-story home, so this in our point of view, is very much in keeping to the scale and nature of the neighborhood. Um, and with that, I'll, I'll pass it back to Attorney Me.
Thank you very much. If you could go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. Um, actually go down to the mind maps, I think would be the best. There you go. So here's an overview, um, and so you can see where this property is, which is a good-sized piece of property and you can see Henderson Circle and I know many of you take a, a, a drive out to these locations and you'll recognize that in fact Henderson Circle has a number of two-story homes that, you know, there's a, a mix of, of homes along Turkey Hill that has gone through transition as well as um, some of the streets off of, um, Turkey Hill, um, including Bayberry and Goldsmith and, and all of those, so we'll, next slide, please. So here's the other mind maps, you can see a little bit clearer, this, the footprint is not changing on this home. You'll see the footprints on Henderson Circle are larger, um, than the ones that were originally built on Turkey Hill, but a number of the homes on Turkey Hill have done an upward extension as Eileen described. Next slide, please. And so here's the house. Um, this is from Turkey Hill. You can see it's a very traditional split-level house. Uh, next slide, please. And there's the other, um, angle from Turkey Hill directly in front of it. Next slide, please. And here's the back of the house, uh, where the garage is and you can see the house that Eileen was talking about right next door on Turkey Hill that has the same gambrel style, um, in a full two stories. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, if you could go back one more slide on, uh, Caitlin, I'm sorry. You can see across the street to the two-story house across the street on Turkey Hill, just to show you the transition. Next slide. And then here's the other corner of the, uh, of the house, uh, in the front and next slide, please. And here is a trip down or a view down Turkey Hill Road. Um, our house is on the right-hand side and you can see the house on the on the left and the one right beyond it that have gone to two fam- uh, two stories and if you look down Turkey Hill, you can see the transition of the two-story homes, um, on down Turkey Hill. Next slide, please. And so, um, the standard for the board, of course, is a special permit not for nonconformities, that there will be no new nonconformity and as we've indicated here, uh, we're not changing the footprint. Uh, the only nonconformity is an upward extension of those, uh, of front yards. Um, and the question would become then, is the, is the change substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure? Um, and as I've noted, uh, we're doing an upward extension. Uh, the house is currently a height of sixteen point one feet and it will become twenty-two point one, so it's only a six-foot difference given the, um, living space within the second-floor roof, um, structure as Eileen described. Um, while three nonconforming setbacks are being extended upwardly, the proposal does not bring the structure closer to any of the property boundaries. Um, architecturally, the design is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood, including some examples that we've provided to you on Turkey Hill, um, where splits have later become, uh, two-story structures. Um, you all will, um, agree, I think, if you've been out there, that this is an eclectic, um, area for architectural style, uh, but certainly in transition, those streets that streets that were built off of Turkey Hill to the east have the larger homes, and those to the west tend not to, except for further down to the north on Turkey Hill, where they get larger again. So we believe that they're, given the number of two-story homes in the surrounding area, and given the modest size of this home, the height of this home, and the design on the same footprint, the size of the lot, and the consistency with the generally eclectic nature and transition of the neighborhood, that the proposed modifications to the structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. I would also point the board's attention to five letters of support, which the applicants received, which are all of the direct abutters to the, to the proposed, to the house at seventeen Turkey Hill Road. And with that, we'd request the board approve the special permit for nonconformities for seventeen Turkey Hill Road for Patrick and Jessica Murray.
Hey, thank you, Attorney Mead. Thank you, Eileen Graff, for the presentation. We'll close that portion and move to any public comment. Seeing only five people in attendance, seeing no hands, I will go once, go twice. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and go right to questions from the board, beginning with Mr. Moore. Any questions?
Once again, I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
No questions. Good presentations. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton.
I took a ride out there today in the freezing weather, and I kind of agree that, like, half of Turkey Hill's already gone up and all Henderson has, so I, very straightforward, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Bennett?
I have no questions.
I shared that. I, I too, it's a thorough presentation, very reasonable for the neighborhood, and, and the plan is certainly credible. So I have no questions either. We close that portion of the public hearing. Going to deliberations around the criteria of a special permit for nonconformities, and we will begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Champetti. First of all, looking at the, the presentation, very straightforward. As always, well-done, thoughtful, and certainly in line with what's going on in the neighborhood. I agree with Attorney Mead that, I mean, Turkey Hill's in my backyard, and it's in, it is in a, a state of transition right now, and, and that's a a normal and a good thing for neighborhoods. So there are a bunch of different styles, and many of them are just going up another floor, so there's nothing new about this. So when looking at special permits, as presented, this plan shows no addition of a new nonconformity, merely resulting in an upward extension of pre-existing nonconforming front and rear yard setbacks. Next, we need to find that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is there. And in making this finding, we always look at size, mass, scale, and as I said, the, the Turkey Hill area is in, in transition. There's many homes, larger, smaller, making changes like this all the time. So this is not unusual. For that reason, I can support it.
All right, very good. Mr. Delisle?
Once again, I'm gonna piggyback on Mr. Moore's analysis, and I can also support this project.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Swanton?
I concur with my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Another concurrence.
And Mr. Bennett?
I would agree. It's a positive addition to the neighborhood.
I, I, I have to agree, and I think the applicant has met the criteria. It certainly, it's beneficial, not detrimental, much less substantially more detrimental, and I, I too can support it. We'll close that portion of the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve special permit for nonconformities for seventeen Turkey Hill Road, ZNC dash twenty-one dash eleven.
Thank you. Second that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Shannon, calling the role, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is five in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the special permit for nonconformities is also approved on seventeen Turkey Hill Road. Thank you, Attorney Mead, and thank you, Eileen, for your patience, and good luck to your clients on the, the addition.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.
Good evening. Okay, members of the ZBA, that concludes our public hearings. We'll close that portion of the agenda, go into our business meeting. We have minutes from Ms. Joy, who shockingly hasn't, you know, slammed the door and stormed out with all these late meetings on us, but thankfully, she's still here. Do we have any changes or modifications, any revisions to her minutes of twelve twenty-eight?
I hope we approve the minutes.
I'm glad of that.
Very good. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Delisle, and the approval of the minutes of twelve twenty-eight, twenty-one, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is six in the affirmative, unanimous vote to approve the minutes of twelve twenty-eight, twenty-one. Thank you. Other updates from the chair and planning director. It's kind of a late night. I'm gonna, I mean, I'd like to table all of this unless anyone has objection with with the exception of just bringing to everyone's attention the short-term rental two ordinances that are before the city council, and I'll just be brief out of interest of everyone's time and, and, you know, and certainly the tax of the evening. And Andy, I'll, you know, certainly, if you had anything you wanted to add, but here's, here's the, the long and the short. I, I think it was myself and, and Mark who logged on to the planning boards last meeting last week, and they serve in an advisory capacity under forty-eight to give counsel to the, to the city council on changes in ordinances that, that sound in zoning and, or, or impact land use. And so there are two ordinances that kind of transitioned over the transition of government from last council and the last administration and found their way back before the city council in a slightly new form. The two ordinances create two new paradigms of permitting for short-term rentals citywide. Originally, before the, before the first of the year, the last version of it, that I believe Ken Swanton, Swanton and I were at the city council, at the Planning and Development Committee of City Council meeting on. The proposal was, the, the council was toiling with whether to have it, have a licensing process that would require every one of the current inventory of about a hundred and fifty-eight short-term rentals throughout the city have to go through in order to be given the blessing of, of the city's process in terms of policing and regulation of Airbnb and VRBO and other short-term rentals, rental units of less than thirty days. It went from something that was simply a licensing process that would have been, that would have been required to go before the Licensing Commission to the city council toil, sort of tinkering with the idea of whether to create a special permit process instead, which would bring it before our board in a full special permit criteria. And again, a hundred and fifty-eight, you know, short-term rental units would all be rushing to the window to get their ticket punched. Surprisingly, and I think this is, this was a surprise to myself and to, to Andy, and I believe to Jennifer Blanche and, and Caitlin and others, as well as some, some of the new, newly-installed city councillors, one of, one or two of whom I've chatted with, there may be others. What came back, what came circle at full around that I, when I saw the latest version, when Kent, when Mark and I saw the latest version that went to the planning board for their input was not one or the other, but rather both, and both a licensing process and a separate special permit process that would relegate all one hundred and fifty-eight plus or minus of these short-term rental units to have to put together a full-on application with full public notice and a full public hearing before our board, as well as the Licensing Commission, with all of the, you know, with all of the fixins, as it were, in terms of filing fees and paperwork. And I believe they, in order to even deal with that, the city would have to search for, find and hire, you know, an administrator for short-term rentals, a, a short-term rental czar. You know, a, a, you know, an Airbnb czar of sorts to, to govern over this, because they certainly, they certainly don't have the staff necessarily now to even deal with half of that, even a fraction of that paperwork. But be that as it may, it's important for us as a board, we as a board, to know that this is coming back before city council with the advice of the planning board to strongly urge them to not have special, a special permit component to this, but rather try to urge them to find favor with merely having a licensing process that is lower impact, easier to access, easier to trigger, and easier to absorb by that commission. So as to not, you know, throat-choke, forgive the expression, or sink the canoe of every, of, of, you know, two, you know, two already overtaxed boards and commissions of volunteer, you know, citizens like ourselves and the, and the Licensing Commission. So my concern, and I expressed this to the council, and I know Mark did as well, and I've expressed it to other, to our planning departments, so that everyone sort of had my, you know, the language that I felt compelled to share, and I share it with you guys as well, which is that setting aside the, you know, the, the, the impact, the private property rights impact, and whether, you know, and honestly, the due process and equal protection components of that. There's really the question, that's just a human question, of whether most people, whether the hundred and fifty-eight of these, you know, impacted people in particular even know about this. You know, and I believe that from our standpoint administratively, if nothing else, we, we have to, you know, really recognize that if this were to go through as scripted now, and council's gonna take up further discussion on February second. If this were to go through as scripted now, my concern for all of us is that by, as you guys probably saw, I don't know if you saw my email, but I, I'm not sure, I think I copied everyone, where I tried to do some rough math. Did, did I, did everybody see that? Everyone? Yeah, so I mean, and it's, it's kind of a cartoon of a computation, right? The idea that council thinks that we could probably get it all buttoned up by June is what they had said. I was like, June of twenty twenty-eight? Or June of what? A different year? Like, because by my math, even if we simply dedicated twenty percent of our hearing day, of our hearing time, which, as you can see, is already like unimaginable. You know, it, it would, it would forestall our docket. It would put us in jeopardy of autumn, of, of giving de facto permits, because we can't get to other, you know, business that we're required to get to within a time limit under forty-eight. We would have to find time, and guess where that time would come from? I think they presume that we're just gonna stay extra, extra, super, extra late. I don't think that's fair to any, you know, volunteer member of any board and commission. I don't think it's fair to the process, you know, and the fatigue factor, setting aside the impact on the public. But I think it's important for the council, from my standpoint, to know where we stand as a board of, of hard-working volunteers, you know, well-intended, fair-minded, you know, folks that come together every other Tuesday night, that it would take six and a half years for this to happen if we simply, if we simply surrendered twenty percent of our meeting, every single meeting. It would take six and a half years. And according to the script of this language, they wanna have, they wanna have this renewed every three years. We would never, ever catch up. We are mathematically doomed to fail. It's like the Titanic. Every watertight compartment is doomed to fail the second the water goes over the volcano, you know? And I, I don't know if they know that, but I feel like we are going down by the head, as it were. So, so I think it's important for us to simply break down the metrics and the math, because, you know, language can be bent, numbers often can't. And, and that's coming from a lawyer, you know? We don't do math. That's why we went to law school, right? Right? I don't know if Greg agrees with that, but, but he's probably better at math than I am. And, and, and Mr. Delisle as well, who's also, I think, suffers, suffers the indignity of being a fellow member of the bar. But you know, I think it's important for us to share this sentiment with the council, and I think hopefully fairer minds were balanced, administrative minds will prevail, but I don't see how we could possibly deal with this. I fear that it would be a brain drain of, of fair-minded volunteers running for the hills. You know, and so I wanted to just let you guys know where my thoughts were. I, I'm certainly interested in everyone else's thoughts, though I know it's late. This is happening on someone else's timeline, so whether we like it or not, I think we just need to speak of it now, so that we have talked about it before. This all comes before the board. I'm sorry, the council.
I agree. I thought your letter was great. I thought it laid out pretty plain to see that this is crazy to think that it would work in any way, shape, or form as proposed. The planning boards behind us, I didn't realize that until that meeting, that they feel the same. That, that it originally was supposed to be just a licensing issue, and then it, it got changed around, but no, I agree, I agree with your encapsulation of the whole process one hundred percent, and we just need to push back in the most official and, and aggressive way we can.
I, I, I think with everyone's collective, and I don't wanna short-circuit anyone else's thoughts, but my, my hope is that I can, I, I can collect the, you know, the authority and assent of each of you as colleagues to, you know, represent our collective thoughts in this regard, so I wanted to get them, you know, from you. I didn't wanna presume that you thought the way I thought on any of this, but share with you like as much as granular of what my thinking is and see where you guys land. Ken, what about you? What do you think?
I think we should endorse what you're proposing tonight, so you're speaking for the whole board.
Agreed.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah. I certainly agree with that.
All right. Well, then with everyone's permission, I will represent those sentiments on our collective behalf, and that isn't to say that you, you aren't welcome and certainly free to, you know, represent your own voice as a member of the CBA or, or as, you know, as a, as a member of the world. You know, and but I'm happy to, you know, I, you know, I'm happy to represent that, you know, to the council on the second that, you know, as that book, as that child, that, that children's book read, you know, I speak for the trees. I, I, I feel like, you know, we can speak as a voice collectively. This will be an administrative impact that I'm not sure the authors in, you know, and I'm sure their best intentions have really given, I don't think they've thought this through. I don't think they've needed to, and I think it's up to us to make sure that they do, because the impact will be, will, will be brutal and blinding, I think. You know, and I don't think it's avoidable, so I, I think we need to sound the alarm and just let them know. Andy, did you have anything, or you and Caitlin have anything you wanted to share, or Jennifer, for that matter?
No, Frank, this is Andy. I would just say I agree with the chair and sort of any particulars, beginning, Jennifer and I have talked about language adjustments that might be appropriate to clarify things. But sort of any policy discussion in there, I definitely am concerned primarily as planning director about the amount of staff time devoted to this, in particular, the volunteer board time for what seems like an onerous process to address things that might be better addressed through just a licensing process, if we can work that out.
Yeah. Jennifer, what are you, what are your thoughts, if, if anything different from, you know, I, I don't mean to make everyone have to speak. I know it's late.
No, I, I think, I think you've brought a lot of good points up, and there's work to be done, and I, I do hope we can greatly simplify what's before us now.
Okay. Caitlin, anything you wanna add?
No, I concur with Andy and Jennifer. Thank you for asking.
Okay. All right, with that, guys, then, you know, with everyone's sort of collective assent, I'm gonna represent the sentiment of the ZBA as a singular voice on this, you know, on these points, and, and hopefully, as I said, you know, more thoughtful, balanced council minds will prevail, and they'll figure out a, a more efficient way versus a duplicated way to get this done without sinking the ship. Anything further? Because if not, I will, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
I'll move.
Second.
We've been seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Yay.
Do we know votes? The ayes have it, the motion carries, the meeting's adjourned. Gretchen, thank you for your patience again this evening. I thank you all for, for sticking it out.
Yeah. Good night. Have a nice evening.
Good night, everyone. Take care.
Bye.